I wanted time to hold a Nibley City Council meeting on February first. And I welcome you here before we call the meeting to order, I'm going to invite Councilmember Mansell to give us some opening ceremonies. Take it away Garrett, please.
Hey, this is my first time, so I promise I'll get better in the next four years. Start with that. Uh, when Justin texted me about this, I thought about, uh, you know, what maybe I could do, uh, or share. And, you know, as with the world to be in right now and chaos and everything else, uh, sometimes it's hard to, uh, feel like you're losing perspective or become a little pessimistic and stuff. Uh, I have a quote that I wanted to share tonight, um, that I really like. And, uh, so I will share that. It says gratitude is the beginning of wisdom stated differently, true wisdom cannot be obtained unless it is built on a foundation of true humility and gratitude. He says, what I am suggesting that each of us turn from the negativism that permeates our society and look for the remarkable good among those with whom we associate. And we speak of one another's virtues more than we speak of one another's faults. That optimism replaced pessimism and our faith exceed our fears. When I was a young man, was prone to speak critically, my father would say cynics do not contribute skeptics do not create and doubters do not achieve. And that is from Gordon Beane Queen. And I just want to reiterate because of how grateful I am that the voters have given me this chance to serve in this capacity. Um, and I am grateful and hope that we can look forward because nearly has a bright future. You know, for that.
That's all I have. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Garrett. With that, we'll call the meeting to order and start with the roll call on that end, please, Kay.
Kay Sweeten.
Garrett Gensel.
Aaron Mann.
Nathan Larson.
Norman Larson.
Larry Jacobs. Arm, are you sure you got it right?
They still.
Okay, since the staff joined us here, we have Levi Roberts, city planner, Justin Mon, city manager, Cheryl Bottaway, city reporter, Steve Alysens, uh, public works director, Tom Dickinson, uh, Nibley City engineer. And welcome Claire, uh, planning zoning chairman, and I think we'll hear more from you tonight. Perfect. All right. Uh, with that, first, uh, the next item would be, we have two sets of minutes to look at and tonight's agenda, we can take those all at once, a little bit out of time. Nathan, I just noticed. Am I slow reading my emails or did you just send us?
No, I thought I sent them last night, but I felt safe.
So I don't know if the rest of council, um, I have looked, they say look, the clerical. So Cheryl, have you had a chance? Excellent.
Oh, I have made the changes. I have had a chance to review.
Yes, ma'am. Yep, perfect. So I'll let the council make whatever motion you feel is appropriate.
Yeah, all eight months, they approved, uh, minutes for both days and current agenda is the clerical.
Okay, we have a motion for two sets of minutes and one agenda, as I said, from Norm. Um, Cheryl and I talked about whether I should say anything. I feel like I have to say something. So I, we, we talked about, uh, the reason we have two sets of minutes is because as I was reviewing December, I, I, I thought I saw some inconsistencies. I didn't have time to resolve them. I hadn't taken time to resolve them. I said, I would come back to you. So I'm going to give you a brief recap of how I was confused. Okay. Cheryl does a great job of keeping the minutes, absolutely. And she also includes, at the top of the minutes, a summary of all of the motions that passed in that meeting. So there's main motion, there will be motions to amend, there will be substitute motions, uh, to replace amendments. And, uh, that makes it a little bit disjointed because if there's a motion to amend that is replaced by a motion to substitute, then that motion to amend becomes a failed motion. And so as we read that summary, we see here's the main motion, and then the next motion, which was a successful motion, is a, a, a motion to, uh, replace, or what I just said, the word. Substitute motion, right? So it's like, here's the main motion, here's substitute motion. And really substitute motion was to replace a failed motion to amend. So after I looked at what I thought it would take to straighten that out and realized what a great job Cheryl does through the body of the minutes and all of the motions are well delineated with italics and indents and everything else. I just felt like that was extra work. To put the motions at the top of the minutes and I think it's easy enough to pick those motions and exactly what happened in those motions based on the delineation in the body of the, of the minute. So that's what's before you tonight. The council can do with that what you want. But the recommendation before you is not Cheryl's fault, it's my fault. So I'll offer that as part of the debate on this motion for two sets of minutes and one agenda. Any other discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All right, that passes. I'm going to take that as you're okay with that format there. Perfect. Thank you, council. And thank you, Cheryl. Uh, let's move to public comment period. This is the opportunity for anyone to stand and address the council on any topic that you would like. Uh, we can interchange information. We won't talk about policy because it's not on our agenda and unless it's on our agenda, uh, Open Meetings Act. And, uh, that doesn't mean it should hold you back from, uh, mentioning to the council any topic you would like. We can engage, we just won't go too deep into policy. So I have a couple of, uh, names here signed up. Taylor Sorensen. And you're four thirty north, six hundred west, Smithville, Utah. And if I'm correct, you're also a county attorney.
That's correct. Uh, I am the new interim county attorney. Uh, again, my name is Taylor Sorensen. Uh, my primary purpose today to come here is, is to thank you. Uh, I think that uh, we've had some hard challenges, some, uh, crimes and suicides and things that have happened, uh, in Nibley and in their surrounding communities. And I just want to thank you for your support to law enforcement and for your support in, uh, helping our victims. It's really an amazing place, uh, Nibley and Cache County, the way that we are able to come together as a community and collaborate and help our most vulnerable people. And so we just want to express to you, and I don't think it gets expressed enough, uh, how much your community, uh, helps law enforcement, how grateful we are to you for the great support that we get from you. So I just wanted to communicate my thanks to you from county law enforcement, the sheriff's office, and the county attorney's office, our prosecutors, uh, for the great work that you do and, uh, just want to let you know how much we appreciate you. So, thank you.
Uh, that's very kind. Council, questions, comments?
Terrific, Taylor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service. Oh, there is one. Please, I'm sorry.
I mean, since we have here, are there other things that we can do better over the, uh, law enforcement or the county's office need more of?
Um, well, at this time, I, you know, I just, a week and a half ago, I went on a ride along with one of our deputies through, uh, through towns, uh, one of the deputies assigned to Providence and, um, he had nothing but great things to say about, uh, about Nibley City as well. So, uh, we just, at this point, just want to express our gratitude to you for our past year, twenty twenty-three, and I'm sure we'll, uh, keep working with you here in the near future. Uh, we, you know, we're together with the whole garbage thing and, uh, getting a new garbage collection set up. So it's not.
We're almost there.
Uh, we're almost there. So it's, you know, it's not just crime, but it, there's a lot of things that the county, uh, works with our cities and towns on and, you know, Cache County really is a special place. We collaborate and we cooperate in such much more efficient way than, you know, anything you can find in Utah County or Salt Lake County. And that helps us really punch above our weight, uh, when it comes to recruiting business, um, how our counties work together, how we're able to prosecute crimes. So, uh, we're just really appreciative of that, um, the cash rally cooperation we have here. So.
Yeah, perfect. Uh, if, if Nibley City had to run a police department, I wouldn't be the mayor. I guarantee it. Maybe that would be a good thing, maybe it'd be a bad thing, but let the voters decide on that one. But we are very appreciative. I am very appreciative of the service we receive from Cache County Sheriff's Department. Chad Jensen does a great job. Um, and we've had a great relationship with you on court prosecution in the past. I know that, you know, we mutually decided it'd be better for us to go different directions on that. And that's looking out good for us if you're interested. But, uh, you guys do a great job. We appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you again. Let's see, Danny, I think I can read your first name.
That's all right. Well, we're just here to kind of back up Taylor. My name is Danny Major. I've been a resident of Nibley City for about thirteen years, went into the county attorney's office that same amount of time. I just thought I'd come and support Taylor and give my support to the county council, the city council. You guys do a great job. The thirteen years my wife used to work here, you guys do a wonderful job. Here's, here's the county attorney's office providing support for Taylor and also support for, uh, the county kind of open up more of a relationship with you guys. I know we've been dealing with court system changes that we've been dealing with over the last four years. So I've been a part of all of that and so I'm just kind of tagging along with him.
Well, thank you. And as a Nibley resident, you can tell Steve that you don't get your roads plowed off. I still have one made van and it pops out. Every time I shovel, there's snow right back in there. Yeah, we're kind of playing push the war with that. Till it melts. Thank you, Danny. Uh, and Danny's address is sixty-eight west, thirty-six fifty south?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. Todd Black, three, three, nine, south, thirteen hundred west. Please, thanks for joining us.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Todd Black. I am, uh, like, he was one of the newer residents to Nibley, been here just over less than three weeks. Um, just came to introduce myself. I've talked to several of your staff, know a few of your staff, know the mayor's boss very well. So, uh, I'm, per my trade, uh, for my profession, wildlife biologist. I worked at Penn State University for twenty years, working on a lot of research projects throughout the state. Uh, and my most, uh, recent, I'm working as a wildlife biologist and environmental planner for Eagle Mountain City of all places. So doing a lot of unique things down there for the city. Over the, through the last ten years or so, I've realized the importance of, uh, civic duty. So without, you know, abusing and using me, I'm, I'm, I'm here to help if I, if I can help with anything. Uh, I talked to Levi already about a few things, but, uh, and I have some, if, if I, and I kind of gather this from what some of the things that you guys are doing, but if you ever want to look at some other low hanging fruit, uh, conservation measures to, uh, help out one particularly that's pretty easy that, uh, I wanted to talk, I would like to talk to you all about. At some time is, uh, kestrel boxes throughout, okay, kestrel boxes throughout the city and some of the open spaces. And, and I'm even willing to use, uh, one square foot of property on the other side of the that soon to be beds on city open space property is the first one. So if that's something that I can come and talk to you all about at some point in time in the future, I'd like to do that.
Wow, thank you, Mr. Black. So I'm, I'm putting this together. I, I, when I write my every other week's dash report to the citizens of Nibley, I start that with greetings, boss, because the, the. And I'm figuring that out now.
I actually worked with that the on a project and the Virgin River and I think we have met, but it's probably been close to three or four years ago.
Yeah, that's fantastic. And so I would, and I'm glad you know Becky and there's lots of stuff that natural spaces and.
Yeah.
Other opportunities.
As I said, I think there's a lot of low hanging fruit things that are neat and cool, but still conservation measures that y'all could be doing that, uh,
can you give, please give Cheryl your phone number because I, I'm going to pitch a job to you tomorrow. Thanks for coming.
I work down there, um, two to three days a week and then work at home, but all typically I have Fridays off. So, yeah.
I, uh, I would love to talk to you about someplace we can use some help. And I think you're a great fit for it. We'll, we'll chat tomorrow if it's okay with you.
Yep.
They'll probably say Becky Yeager when they call you on the cell phone. It's actually her account. So.
Okay.
All right.
Not a word.
Comments, questions from council? Go ahead.
The kestrel box. For me?
Yeah, yeah. I've never heard of that.
A kestrel box? I should have brought it in. I brought it, I have it in my truck, but it's just a nest box. Do you know what kestrels are? Little falcon birds that, that they really do well in the, in the urban, um, open space environment. So you, and there's several pairs that are nesting somewhere in Nibley because I see them all over there. And the kestrel box is just a box you put up on a power pole that's fifteen, twenty feet off the ground. And in, in Eagle Mountain, dumbfounded how fast those get occupied. They've been doing it now for probably ten, twelve years. They have over thirty nesting pairs in just within city limits. And when you put those out, at least down there, they are occupied within a week or two. And I really think that has to do with generations of baby kestrels that are floating around in their circles and they just, where I nest is this kestrel box that's on a pole. And they, they, you get, it's almost comical how fast they get off.
And, and I asked Becky when she mentioned your kestrel box project and said, so what do they prey on? And I tell us, tell us what they eat.
They're, they're probably better mousers than cats.
There you go.
And cats aren't my favorite animal, so I would really have kestrels.
So we can outlaw cats if we bring your kestrel. We have an attorney answering our voice.
Chat and torture.
All right. All right. Terrific. Thank you for coming. Welcome to Nibley.
Appreciate your time.
For the work and with.
What you do and, uh, like I said, happy to be able to.
We'll give you a chance to. We missed you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak to us tonight about any topics you want? You don't have to have signed up. You can, uh, if you'd like to speak to us, just approach the mic and tell us who you are. Okay, if not, we'll move on with the agenda and go to, uh, planning commission report. We have our chair of the planning commission, Claire Fink. And, uh, if you would like to give us that report, Levi's here to help. If you guys can tag me, do it however you want. Appreciate you being here, Claire.
No problem. I didn't realize it was a tie and jacket event.
We had our pictures made today. We look once, we live in once a year.
Once a year?
No, once every two years.
So I took note after knowing last time you were here. Anyway, um, council met a couple of weeks ago. Um, we talked about the words, uh, twenty-four hyphen zero one, that you guys are going to go reviewing today and it's listed there. So don't be a spoiler on that. But we agree with it in passing and I think it's a good move for accessory dwelling units encouragement in Nibley. So. Um, then we had a workshop on, um, zoning for moderate income housing. Um, we went through it. We looked at different cities. I have to go to my other notes. Um, different cities from Hurricane, um, Ywena, Bieber, and Las Vegas and Salt Lake. And to encourage housing, they covered everything from deed restrictions to, um, bonuses, bonuses centers and trust land type things on the things. And we, um, put it off. We didn't think we were ready for that. Yeah, we'd like to see how the accessory dwelling units go in Utah or Nibley and see how well they work out and stuff like that. So that'll probably come around in a few months depending on how things go. And so we're trying to encourage moderate income housing in Nibley. And right now we think the accessory dwelling, we felt like the accessory dwelling in this is probably our main push for the moment. It changed quickly, but or it could be delayed longer. And then we went through the goals, um, for uh, Nibley, for the planning commission and Levi hopefully will help in this one. Um, but we thought the city center would be a good one and also my next, and, um, city center goal would be good. And there's one other one. Annexation of Nibley could also be another one to look at, see what that'd be. And then also cluster subdivisions, what did that look like? And so do that. And we think that's kind of a nutshell really quick.
Perfect. Yeah. And so they gave feedback on the goals and then I'm going to come back with a draft for planning commission and then bring it to city council for review, probably for the next meeting.
And that's everything I have for now.
One of the things that I offered to the planning commission, uh, and I'm going to bring it up with council too. Maybe this is a good spot. With our every third week's schedule, I think that gives us an opportunity on the week where there's no planning mission meeting and no city council meeting, to actually have a special workshop meeting between the planning commission and city council. So that you don't have to come to our meetings and we don't have to go to your meetings. And, but that gives us a great opportunity, maybe in a workshop session, have a joint meeting of the two bodies where we can brainstorm some of these ideas. So, we can, i- if you see an opportunity for that and want to suggest it, would be, we'll follow up on it.
You're talking about a one-time workshop or like a monthly workshop?
No, just ad hoc. It's like, every so often I hear the planning question saying, we should get together with the council and talk about this. And, I mean, as you know, I, I go to a lot of planning commission meetings, Claire. I hope you'll back me up on this. I'd make as strong a point as I can, even though you all know me, to not say anything so that they can act as a true, uh, uh, body of, uh, some words escape me once in a while, recommending body. There we go. That's a nice name. Um, but the chance for the two, they get together, you know, on equal footing and hash through some of these things before it becomes a formal proposal, I think would be a great opportunity. You have great planning commission members are knocking out of the ballpark. They miss you, Garrett. Don't worry about it.
I cried the first week. Yeah, we, we, I think all of them agreed to that and thought it was a great idea to meet.
Yeah. It lets us get together ad hoc to setting purpose. This is all we're going to talk about. Have that workshop and move on from there.
So it'll be a public meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's okay. It'd be a public meeting, public, I noticed, we take minutes and the whole thing. It'd be a joint meeting about, about whole lives. We have, and I, I thought it was productive when we did it. It's a little bit, you know, I mean, when we're on a two week schedule and now I'm on every other week schedule, that means it's hard to decide who goes to whose meeting sometimes. you know, I mean, when we're on a two-week schedule and now I'm on every other week's schedule, that means it's hard to decide who goes to whose meeting sometimes.
But that means we're on equal footing with that.
Okay, we agree. We also saw in two new commission, that's how to include Roy and Nick.
Yeah.
So, and they're excited. We're going home. I think everything's positive so far. Wait for the night, it's public notice, I guess. Maybe I'll get a chance to wear a tie.
Success, very success.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. With that, thanks, Claire. We'll move into, uh, resolution twenty four oh four. This would be an addendum to the Nibley City Sewer Master Plan. Uh, Tom Dickinson is bringing this to you. Uh, with possibility of it being first greeting, Tom, you need any more than that? You're, you got it, huh?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, counsel. Um, so I'm just gonna read, just get started up a little bit of the background of the agenda and report. Um, Nibley's lucky. We have a fairly new sewer system that was installed in two thousand and forty's. Uh, it's great not having to have those older infrastructure issues. Oh, sorry. I thought you were signaling me. I'll, I'll continue on. Um, and we also have a sewer master plan. Latest update was in two thousand twenty-one. So typically you take these master companies, update them based on current growth patterns, efficiencies that are found throughout the system during routine maintenance and things. Uh, you, you plan for capital projects to accommodate growth patterns and things of that sort. Uh, so typically you'll update those between five and seven years. And so ours is very fair to new, but there's an area of town that sounds of thirty-two hundred south and west of about fifteen hundred west is not served by sewer. Um, it's, uh, there, there's some challenges there. It is undeveloped now. Uh, it's mo- mostly unannexed yet. It's county land, but it's in our, uh, future annexation plan. So it's most likely going to come to the city in the future. So this study was focused on that area. So picture fifteen hundred west to the highway and from thirty-two hundred south down to about forty-four hundred south, that, that undeveloped area there. So this, uh, the study, the purpose of it was to determine how to maximize the amount of gravity flow sewer that we can utilize. So take it to our current lift station and then find out what area we need to plan for that we, we would need to pump or add energy to get that sewer down to the treatment center. So J U B, we entered into a contract with J U B. Took them a couple of months. They did some survey work. There were challenges that we had to work through as well, the, uh, one of them being geographically the higher slope. I think a really deep waterway, low, slow flowing water. We, we're trying to figure out, can we go over it, under it, through it? So there was an extensive survey, survey done on that area. There were some flow calculations involved and we determined by installation of a box culvert, we could bury that and put the sewer over the top. So that was kind of a constraint that we used to design and figure out how much gravity sewer we had for the rest of the area. And what we found was we can service the gravity area from approximately, I believe it's nineteen hundred west. I'm trying to skim reading through here. Let me go to my map. Maybe two thousand west. It was right in that area, nineteen hundred to two thousand west. They were, uh, gonna be able to gravity flow. So what that means is we don't have to pump that twice. We, we can get it right to our existing lift station. Anything west of that, we would have to add a new lift station. So, um, once we found that area, we were able to, uh, engineer, or they did, engineer a pipe size and a potential alignment to take that pipe. So all of this being said, just to make this short, um, we have two alignments, one for the gravity system that's spread at nineteen hundred west. And then we have another gravity line, line B, that goes to a pump station that's about twenty-two to twenty-five. Um, we feel there's a really good plan. We'd like to adopt it. So we can start planning and then as development occurs, we can refer to this plan and make sure we get the proper infrastructure in there. So granted, this, this, uh, plan also, we, I added some flow in there that typically isn't done. So it's been a few months. Uh, we had someone come into the city asking if they could be served. And this was a big industry. This is eight hundred gallons per minute of water and wastewater. They were trying to capitalize on, on certain, uh, infrastructure that was already there. But, um, with that in mind, I had in the study, they added eight hundred gallons per minute. So there's a little bit of fluff in this, but what it ended up doing was increasing the pipe size only by one. So what that means is we could have gotten away with an eighteen inch or a twenty-one inch pipe, excuse me, twenty-one inch pipe. But by adding this eight hundred gallons, we go to twenty-four inch pipe. And you have that capacity to service any big industry that, that may come in down in that south area. It's a real deal. We, I investigated it months ago. So I wanted to be able to plan for that and not be constrained with that if we implement this plan. So, I mean, for everyone clear on where we are with the purpose of this is. Um, there's some maps in here. These, these show, uh, drainage areas. Uh, this is actually zoning. The purple area down below is the industrial area. That's where I added eight hundred gallons per minute there. The green areas, I can't read it from here, but, uh,
Agriculture.
It's agricultural and then the purplish area, like I said, is industrial. We have some commercial in the orangish areas, meeting density in, in the tanner areas and the red is also commercial. So. So the way we sized the pipe was through our sewer master plan. Um, it kind of gives base flows that we measured and, and planned for. And that was used to determine how many units to plan for, what sort of, uh, uses and how to determine what flows they were. And so it's all general thirty thousand foot level analysis, but, um, it should sue this well moving forward.
So now that I'm looking at the map, Tom, if you would help me understand how far south we can go with gravity feed to our existing lift station?
Can you go to another, the next map to the other map then?
Is this one?
There you go. Yes. So you'll notice here, I'm gonna hand you in quicker. You'll see the gravity line is right here and this one will not need any pump. This is the nineteen hundred west. Comes up, goes into the existing lift station. This one over here is a gravity line that also goes to a lift station planned right about here. And from that lift station, it crosses over into the gravity. And then there, so there, there's two options here. We can get past the existing lift station and convey that to the, to Logan City. Or in my opinion, the flows here are gonna be much greater than what we have capacity for in our existing lift station. So we might think about either increasing the size of the pipe that's currently in place or picking another alignment to pump this additional flows that we're planning for up to Logan. Um, we didn't, this study didn't get to that level. There's future studies needed to determine what that's gonna look like there. So. So just to recap, gravity here goes to the existing lift station. Gravity here goes to a new lift station. And then from there, we need to plan how we're gonna get that to the treatment plant. And these are twenty and twenty-one inch, twenty-four inch up in the, the north areas there. So, uh, the staff recommends either first or secondary waving, second reading or, or not. It, it's good to talk these things through, but, uh, we'd like this to be by, uh, resolution adopted as an amendment to the existing sewer master plan.
Okay. Any other questions for Tom before I turn to the council?
Just, um, so we, we wouldn't install any lift stations until we start to see development in that area, correct?
That's correct. Yeah. So, um, we're just getting in, into capital project one, I mean, probably next month. So if, if we wanna look at long-term planning, that maybe a six, ten, twenty-year plan. But getting the infrastructure installed now would be ideal. You know, let's say, for example, if there was a development coming up on twenty-six hundred south that goes up by Heritage Drive hypothetically. The, this plan shows a twenty-four inch pipe going in, installed in that Heritage Drive section there. So we might be able to plan for those things and get them installed and developed out.
Just to follow up, that was my, my next, what my question was, this resolution doesn't encumber money at this point. It encumbers money in, in the future through a capital improvement plan and.
That's correct. So, so you'll notice in the very back, I believe, it might be the last sheet of the study. It, it has some cost estimates for pipe, uh, things of that sort. This is for a lift station. It's a, an estimate of probable cost for a lift station. This is the last sheet. Says about one point three million dollars in the future. We should start budgeting for that, whether we need that in five, ten, twenty years, but start looking at that for sure. And this gives us an idea of what to budget for.
For this year.
For this year, I mean.
And then when we build it, it'll be two or three times more, the way things are going.
That's way over Gen I.
Sorry, I, I didn't mean to steal that from spoiler. Same question.
It's a, this didn't pass. I mean, we have growth that would just be in a smaller pipe because that's what our, our plan is right now.
Yeah, this, this doesn't pass. I, I don't know what other tool we would have to plan for that growth down there. This, this is a great tool. Um, but yeah, we most likely end up with undersized pipe that we'd have to come back later and pay more to remove.
Good question. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Counsel, there's.
Make a motion to approve and wait back again.
Motion to approve, and I think you said wait second reading? Okay, right. Motion to approve and wait second reading, second from K. Discussion, please.
There. Is there anything that we need to look at? Need to wait in the, the second reading? Do we need to adjust or are we confident that we're gonna have?
Can you expand on your questions?
He's just, he's proposing just to pass it as it is? Are we, we good as it is or do we need another reading to make your point?
Thank you. Yeah. No, I, I've gone through this. I've had a few discussions with the person that prepared this report. I had, I did have concerns and the main concern was, you know, we have all this stuff planned at that lift station, this new lift station. How do we get it to Logan? Cause current capacity isn't there quite. So, uh, no, with, with this study, I feel good about it. It, it's a high-level study, obviously, but gives us a basis to move forward.
Justin, you have your hand up earlier?
Yeah, I changed my mind. Good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's an objection to proceeding to vote. Seeing no objection, we shall vote. Will you call the roll for us, please, Cheryl?
Councilmember Larson, what is your vote?
In favor.
Councilmember Lowich, what is your vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann, what is your vote?
In favor.
Councilmember Mancell, what is your vote?
Favor.
Councilmember Sweeten, what is your vote?
In favor.
Thank you.
Okay, five in favor, none opposed. Tom, good job. Appreciate you looking out for the future for us. Next, let's talk about amending Nibley City Code, uh, relating to uh, accessory dwelling units and, uh, setback requirements for accessory buildings. Levi, will you take this, take this for us, please?
Yeah, so, um, this ordinance primarily comes from our modern, a modern income housing plan, which, uh, strategy one, uh, create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units and residential zones. Really looking at reducing regulations, uh, that the city already adopted a, um, an ADU ordinance about three years ago. And, um, the, the planning commission together with staff, you know, did some research considering all, all the different barriers, um, to, to developing ADUs. So the, the action items specifically in the plan include tracking ADUs, which we, which we have done, and I'll show you kind of where we're at there. Researching barriers to building ADUs and considering amendments, uh, to the ordinance. So since the ordinance has passed, we've seen, uh, five detached ADUs that have been permitted as well as nine internal ADUs. Um, the ordinance we're talking about though really just, uh, is, is primarily speaking to the detached ADUs. Um, internal ADUs are, we treat the same as two-family dwellings and those are, those are permitted use in um, all zones within Nibley City. Um, so we, there have been a couple of other amendments, you know, previous to this. But, you know, staff hasn't really seen noticeable change in the pace of permit applications that, you know, there, for, for example, there used to be, uh, a regulation that short-term rentals aren't allowed and that, that regulation was lifted. And then, uh, last year there was some, uh, fine tuning of impact fees and how those, and, and how that plays into it. But that, and, and generally, you know, we've, we've seen a few ADUs, not really a lot. I mean, you're talking about a couple per year, you know, that are being permitted. And this last year, I, 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 maybe we've had one this, this last year. So, and you know, the kinds of units we're seeing, these are three of the renderings and you see they're all quite different from each other. The one on the left kind of looks like a, just a house, right? Um, the, it's twelve, it's a route and twelve hundred square feet, two-car garage and that, and that's allowed as, as an accessory dwelling unit. Um, the living area is, you know, no more than twelve hundred square feet. That, that one in the middle is about nine hundred square feet, but two levels. So it's pretty small footprint there, you know, four, four, five hundred uh, square foot footprint, but, but with, with stairs. Um, and then that one on the right has a huge shop area, but, and, and accessory dwelling unit above. I mean, you, if you look at, you look at it and it probably just looks like a big shop, but, but they've, they've got, they've got an apartment above that. So, you know, we've seen some different applications. What was that? Yeah.
Can I come over for a seat, please?
So, you know, I mean, I think that shows that, that, you know, they, they can be applied in different applications, but, but there's, you know, there remain some barriers. We've heard some potential applicants as well as applicants that have, um, have come in and, and some of the issues that they, they see with the ordinance and, and that kind of, you know, that played into discussion with planning commission. So some of the changes that, these, these are some of the changes that were discussed. Not all of these were, are being recommended tonight. But one is to remove the owner occupation requirement currently both for two-family dwellings and accessory dwelling units. Um, the property needs to be owner occupied. So one of the units, uh, needs to be owner occupied there. And I'll talk about, you know, what the recommendation was for that. Um, decreasing the off-street parking minimum currently for detached accessory dwelling units, they require two additional parking spaces. Um, and that's above, you know, beyond what, what the primary dwelling requires. Um, allowing for ADUs on lots with two-family dwellings. So currently, if, if it is a, a house with, if there is a two-family dwelling, then no ADUs allowed. So only two dwellings on, on one lot is, but you know, that, that was something that was discussed. Um, removing the restriction on installation of separate water and sewer meters. Um, so, so currently the ordinance does not allow the installation of, of a separate water sewer meter. They just need to tie into the, the same meter that, that the primary dwelling's on. Um, loosening setbacks or height requirements is, was another thing that was discussed and, and there's some of that that, that played in the recommendation. And then, uh, uh, it was also discussed whether to decrease the minimum lot size for ADUs, which currently is twelve thousand square foot. So, you know, Nibley's starting to develop more, more lots that are, that are smaller than that, you know, ten thousand, eight thousand square foot lots. So that was discussed as well. Um, this is what is being proposed tonight. Uh, I'll, I'll go through each of these. So removing the owner occupation requirement is, uh, is being recommended. Um, you know, what was discussed is, is this, this, this can be a barrier to, um, investing in an AT, ADU long-term, uh, whether, whether you, whether the owner lives in the unit now or maybe has different plans in the future. Um, some people are hesitant to do that, knowing that, hey, if I move out of this and want, and let's say I wanna get another house and rent both those units out, that's not going to be allowed. So, um, you know, and I, when with, when this was originally adopted, the idea and, and the way it is now is, is that, um, it, 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 you know, wanted to have onsite. it it be, it would, you know, wanted to have onsite management, so just better maintenance of of the units. But you know, one thing I've noticed, there really, there is no owner occupation requirement for other rental units in the city, so it really is treating ADUs differently than than all other uh, rental units in that respect. Um, and what, and for consistency, this also recommended to be lifted for two-family housing, which which uh, also has that um, requirement, um, that was actually added to the two-family housing ordinance um, within the last few years, also to be consistent with the ADU uh, regulation, so. So that, that's being recommended, um, there's currently a regulation that ADUs cannot be taller than the primary dwelling, and um, for for some property owners that would like to build an ADU above a garage, like, let's let's say they have a one, you know, one-story house, and they want to build an ADU above a, above a garage, uh, they're not able to do that if um, or, you know, or or even, or a two-story, you know, small two-story ADU, actually, one of those examples, the first rendering they came in with, it was a little taller than the primary dwelling, because it's two stories, the smaller one that was in the middle, they had to actually build a basement to fit it on there, um, so. You know, by, by limiting, limiting it, the the height to thirty, to to thirty feet, we fit, you know, the planning commission staff felt that, you know, that's, that's um still lower than the primary dwelling, which is forty feet maximum, and and, you know, depending on the lot size, that's also the maximum for accessory uh, buildings, other accessory buildings, so that 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 just seemed more appropriate to allow, you know, up to thirty feet, regardless of the the height of the primary dwelling. Um, this next one is a recommendation to lower the required impact fee to fifty percent of the rate of multifamily dwelling, and if you might recall, uh, last year, uh, when when the impact fees were uh, were changed, the um, there was an ordinance that that came up to just waive the impact fee completely on on um, accessory dwelling units, and and the council decided to uh, you know, rather than waiving them, changing, changing one of the uh, allowances for a rebate for accessory, for accessory dwelling units that are provided at uh, at a rate that's affordable to low-income households. And uh, that that part of it's not being changed, but it but it's being recommended to, you know, cut that impact fee in half, just to um, just to lower the barrier of entry, and with the acknowledgement that, you know, square footage of ADU are, i- is restricted, and so um, you know, the impact of an ADU is likely to be lower um than than for other housing, housing units there, so. That's being recommended, a couple of clarifications uh, were added, so the, on the square footage, uh, you know, thi- this is consistent with how staff has been interpreting it, but just clarifying the garage shop space outside the living area isn't counted toward the floor area of of the ADU, so you know, you can't, it can't, it can be attached to, you know, an accessory building that may have other floor area to it, um, garage or or something like that um. And then this next one, a change in the front setback regulation for accessory buildings um. So that they currently, for accessory buildings, they they need to be behind the house, and and what's being recommended here is that they just need to be behind the front setback area. So this does, I mean, in most cases, this is going to be more impactful for accessory buildings, however, you know, a- as I mentioned, there's some accessory dwelling units that are combined with accessory buildings and that, uh, and for lots in particular, that have a house that is, you know, has a really deep setback, um, it it becomes difficult for them to build behind the house. But if, as long as they're outside that front setback area, you know, we felt like, like it's um, there, it still meets the intent of of you know, being consistent with with that thirty-foot or thirty-five-foot setback. Uh, there's, there's one, you know, nomenclature clarification on what we call the permits, and then this last one uh, was a recommendation from the planning commission that to remove the restriction on installation of separate water, water and sewer meters. Uh, this, this wasn't uh, recommended by by staff, but but the planning commission did did make this recommendation, and one of the points that they made was um, and you know, Claire, if you want to add to it, you can, but but the, in some cases, it it it's more economical to add a separate water sewer meter because of how the lot may be configured, rather than tying into the the primary home um. So it just, and and, you know, there, in some cases, you know, we we heard that people would prefer that there's a separate water hookup, you know, so their utilities are are accounted for separately um. But, but yeah, I, this, this was, this is currently in the ordinance, this this regulation, and and, you know, and may- maybe uh, Tom and, or Justin, you can um, chime in here, but you know, really, really, the primary purpose of that is just to reduce maintenance uh, costs for the city, as, you know, this this requires you to cut into the road, and just, you know, reduces the or ju- just adds to the maintenance of the road, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
Yeah, just from my, just personally, road cuts hurt my soul. I hate it, so, you know, it's not a a hill that we really want to die on, it's just we have a hard time with road cuts, especially if there are other options for and hooking up and not needing to, so. Just something, like I said, not not a hill we want to die on, but that's kind of our opinion.
Yeah, so the pla- planning uh, commission's recommendation is to recommend approval, you know, with all these changes, including the the um, striking that that section regarding separate meters and meters and hookups. That's all I've got on that one.
Questions on uh, what Levi has suggested, or what the planning commission has recommended? Eric?
Yeah, just a clarification, um. Going to lower the impact fee to fifty percent if you're multifamily, now, remind me, we had set up so that, on the ADUs, you get reimbursed thirty-three percent every year, through year, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So just the total will be just half that then, but still reimbursed it.
Correct, yeah, still reimbursable, it's just, if if this passes, then all of the impact fees would be cut in half of, from what they currently are, you know, for that initial fee.
Okay.
Mark, do you fear that this would be making flag lots if you have separate utilities, change them in size of your lot, and then separate power utilities?
I mean, I guess, or you're you're saying it's, it it, I mean, it's essentially a a flag lot that's not divided, basically, I mean, I guess, I guess you can look at it that way. Um, if if you have an accessory dwelling unit, and you, and you put in, you know, the separate utilities, I suppose you could come in later and and ask, you know, try to subdivide as a flag lot, if you meet all the, if you meet all the requirements, you could do that, but
Minimum lot size.
Minimum lot size and all of that, but but if not, it would just have to be on the same lot, so it couldn't be separate owners.
Yeah, these are yeah, this, the ADU doesn't create a separate lot, uh, owned by one person. The, as long, yeah, and there is the opportunity anytime that a lot could be subdivided, if it meets the building requirements, that that request would come in.
Yeah, just an anecdote, that one of the ADUs that was approved, they they wanted to do a flag lot, but they they were along thirty-two hundred south, and one of their requirements for a flag lot is, or one of the restrictions is that it can't be along an arterial roadway. They couldn't do that, so that, this was kind of their backup plan was was to do, you know, an accessory dwelling, and and it was for, it was housing for their family, they expressed, so they could kind of make it work, but they really, they're, they would have rather done a flag lot.
So we were, how does the city address it if they have separate meters and stuff? It's all of one parcel, they don't have a separate address. How does the city get a, we had a separate metering for two different dwelling units, all of the same parcel?
Can you, can you speak to that, Justin, I mean, I I know that we we probably have other cases where there's one address with multiple meters, correct? Tom, or or not? Is that another issue?
Didn't have a, you get to create a basement apartment, or an ADU, do you think? And they wanted a separate mailing address, so we created an A and a B, like, do you remember that one?
Yeah, we.
Like a, an A and a B.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So yeah, it has the same. Number, so it's, it, you can do an A or B, or keep one with just a unit number, and I've seen it done, like, fifty-nine and a half as the the rear unit, so there there's ways to get around that stuff, but um, I don't know if it'd be a big challenge, so.
No, I think it'd be fine, I was running in my head, I was trying to think of the software, the accounting software, and I think that's the workaround, that you'd have a unit number.
Just add, just add a new distinguishing address.
I was trying to think from the tiles, respecting everything, although on the ADU, you know, we take up, you'd have to give it on the entire parcel, so the primary is, should also be centered to that. And so, it's like, if we separate it with meters, maybe, I do, I think, we need to create flag lots, because it sounds like they should be under a lot of that, but they don't need that, it'd be great. A headache for you guys at the ministry, and something like that. Okay, and we can move from questions and answers to a motion anytime that you would like.
I'll give you a motion.
Tom, Kay was so, sorry, so.
I I just have one question, curious to know if planning's only discussed it all, um, the, the other, reducing the impact fee by fifty percent with some of the rationale, then that's because you're not putting in additional individual sewer connections, so we can justify reducing the impact fee, but then they're talking about perhaps adding those extra connections, was there any discussion from the planning resulting in, so what did they say before we move into our discussion?
Yeah, you know, they they did, and that's a good point, they they did discuss that um, as part of the rationale for reducing the impact fee, however, they they also, you know, said that, they also passed the motion that that they would, they would allow you to have separate meters, so I don't think in the discussion, those were connected, that if you had, if you had a, you know, a separate sewer water meter, then all that triggers, you'd have to pay it uh, the full impact fee, uh, that that wasn't really brought out into the discussion.
Yeah, you you, just listening to the planning commission, you mentioned that ADUs are limited in square footage, and so it can think, well, the family can't produce as, or maybe wouldn't produce as many kids that need park space, as many uh, flushers of the toilet, and I mean, you know, so maybe that's where the impact, the impact would be reduced, because it's a smaller building. I just have to throw this in, I knew that putting As and Bs on addresses, it's ringing the bell somewhere, so Sherlock Holmes, uh, his address is two twenty-one B in Baker Street, so it can be done.
My shop address is fifty-eight and a half because of the mailbox, the people address the difference of a half, but your mail carrier isn't even. I'll I'll give you a motion.
Thank you, Mark.
What, a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four oh one for first reading?
Okay, motion for first reading, second from Nathan. So that means this is the great opportunity for us to maybe not offer amendments, maybe not discuss too deep into policy, but just make sure we understand what's being presented uh, in the draft, and and ask for additional research uh, of staff before we get the second reading.
Nathan? So one of the things that I'd love our staff to consider, if it would help anyone else, is um, when it comes to such a building units, just seeing examples, maybe some that have been applied for, or maybe done, or or the changes to the setbacks and some of those kind of things, like, for instance, seeing a lot that has a really far setback, and what a accessory dwelling unit that someone's applied for, but didn't get, but this would then free up, right, because that was what I heard, was one of the part of the reasoning is, we want to do it, but we can't, we think that these things will free those up, so.
Yeah.
Does that?
Yeah, I think the difficult, I mean, I I don't know if we're going to have any examples of denied applications, because they never got to that point, it was more con- it was more conversations, and once they find out, you know, the sum of all the regulations, and it just doesn't work for them, then, you know, so I I don't, I don't know if I have an example of a there might be one denied, one that that I have, but.
Okay. That's not a yes.
Um. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different examples out there, um. I guess if you have anything specific of how.
I was mostly, I think they've gotten denied or didn't get through.
Yeah.
With that hope, so.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of us.
So Nathan, that's a great point, and it's maybe an opportunity to point out that this ordinance change is also proposing to allow accessory buildings, not only accessory dwelling units, in front of the main building, as long as they're out of the main setback, so we do have, we do have an example of that where someone is in fact thinking about asking for a variance, because they have a a lot with a house way in the back of their lot, and uh, they'd like to build a bar, and one place to really put it is front of their house. Still well out of the setback, but in front of their house, they have this huge area in front of the house.
Yeah, I just think about all the lots over here on the side of one sixty-five, it's going to be a lot of stuff that's.
So it's not an idea, yeah, when there's some lots, skinny lots, right?
I remember when the house next door was for sale, and someone approached me and said, could I build my big house in the back and call that the ADU? I said, no, because it has to be behind the house, because that, because that's only like nine hundred, like, you can call that an ADU. But, anyway.
If you do the barn like you're talking about, and we're captain at thirty feet, would we go taller than thirty feet?
I don't know, that was just the type proposed for this, this minimal shelter, no, it's the one horse, yeah.
That's, that'd be a, I'm worried about the thirty feet. Is, is it, if your house is forty feet, you're still, you can go thirty feet? Because that's what, with with this draft, with this draft.
Mm-hmm.
You go up the barn with, at the with the ceilings, because you want to get your RV in there, and then you want a ten-foot, you're at thirty, but you still have time to work.
Yeah, so you can't do it.
You can do it, but that's a bit smaller, sorry.
Right, that's not going to fit.
Yeah, I I request from staff, maybe think about, um, I I very much respect the idea of avoiding cuts into the asphalt.
Mm-hmm.
Um, maybe you could think about new meters that connect to main lines that don't require cutting into the asphalt. Maybe there aren't many lots like that, could be in a utility Eastman, that's not underneath asphalt.
It's possible.
That, that would allow the, the whole lot. No, I mean, I, from the planning commission discussion, I think the idea was, if I take my house, right? I've got electricity over here and got gas over there, and so if I put an ADU on one side of the house without adding a meter, I have a long run of either electricity, water, or gas, or something, because the utilities are on opposite sides of the house, so it might be in constructing an ADU, they said, well, it's easier, less expensive, even though it's another meter, I have to pay for another meter, it's easier to just attach to the uh, closest place that it's available, even if it needs adding another meter. There may not be that many places like that, maybe most utilities are under asphalt.
There's, there's a fair amount. It's good talk.
And this is only, just, just, I've only heard from one, you know, resident that this is an issue with. The rest that were interested in A D U's, it didn't seem to be a problem, but. Anyway.
Um, so one thing to think about, not proposing anything here, but, um, in our size, height, and zoning. Um, requirements for accessory dwelling units, we put a restriction that, you know, if it's in the rear yard, it can't be more than twenty-five percent. So if we're gonna change, you know, house stuff in the front, do you want a similar restriction of twenty-five percent? Do we want to just get rid of twenty percent, five percent? It looks like that may have been something that planning zone did not consider. So we should probably consider, there was a reason we felt it should only be twenty-five percent of the rear, so if we're gonna allow it to the front, is the reason still the same?
That's something to consider, um, however, it, I think it's important to note that the, the setback, the front setback is still. Is still provided for, and has quite a bit of space there. So, but, but yeah, I mean, that, that could be a, an addition to, you know, ensure that it's not. Just all taken up by a big building.
That's been an interesting ordinance, a number to me for about twenty-five, weird.
Yeah, the twenty-five percent also, it, of the rear yard, it very rarely comes into play. Because lots in Nibley are, are big. I mean, that's, I mean, the majority of them are, you know, it's, and, and, and there's all variety restrictions on the size of accessory buildings. That put them well below that, it's only if you have multiple accessory buildings that it starts to become, yeah.
All right, other things to ask for clarifications, or this, Nathan?
Um, I can't find it real quick here, but temporary rental units. Are considered commercial use?
Short-term rentals?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they do require, um, a business license, short-term rental does. Um, you, if it. If, if, if you have a short-term rental, and it's, um, owner, the housing's owner occupied, it's a home occupation license. If it's like a vacation rental, it's, you know, its own unit, that's a commercial, that does require a commercial business license. Do we have any? No. Do we have any that actually have a business license? But that is what the requirement is.
Are you, are you thinking of that in this context of A D U?
We say in our current definition that. Especially going, or especially buildings.
Right, and for accessory dwelling units, there is, there is something in there that, that says you can have a home occupation within an accessory dwelling unit.
We get rid of the owner occupied, does that impact the ability for people to create? What impact does it have on that scenario? Guess is what I'm bringing up.
Um, I don't think it would impact it, because you can have a home occupation, whether you're a renter or, or a homeowner.
Yeah, the thoughts, sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Nathan.
I, but short-term rental, that's, that's something to think about, yeah. Yeah, yeah, you might, you might not. I, I think, well, you could, it would just, if it wasn't owner occupied, it'd be a commercial business license instead of.
Because we, I guess this is my, my spiel for council, we proclaim in our purpose for A D U's, that is to create moderate income housing. Not to create side businesses, right? And so to, to look at what the impact on some of these changes will be. Incentives that create, and if there's, it's still, I guess restricted, I think there still is.
All right. If there's no objection, we'll hold on first reading. Any objections, let's have a voice vote, please, uh, those in favor of the ordinance as presented for first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, Levi, we'll bring you back. All right, let's see what I'll look to. Number eight, awarding a contract for alpha planning and design for Nibley City Active Transportation, Levi, that's you again, if you would, please.
All right, um, so this project, the, the budget's forty-seven thousand, and thirty-five thousand of that. Comes from a UDOT Technical Planning Assistance Grant that was awarded recently, um. Purpose of this, this plan is to identify a network of facilities, both, both on and off-street. Provide safe, convenient, comfortable connections, both existing and future neighborhoods. Um, promote healthy living, improve recreational opportunities, this will act as an update to the Trails Master Plan. And, um, the active transportation elements of the Transportation Master Plan, so it's a new planning document, it's not something we currently have. But it's taking a holistic look at, at the active transportation facilities, you know, needed in the city. Um, reviewing, updating, is, you know, as well as, you know, coming up with that network. This is included in the budget, so the selection team for the, um, for the project. Up there on the screen, so myself, uh, Tom, our city engineer, Steve, Public Works Director, uh, Mayor, um. Councilmember Mann, and then Landis Winger fro, from Cash County Trails, uh, was also involved. Um, so we, we just had, we had two firms bid on the project. One was Alpha Planning Design, the other was Township and Range, and you can see the average score there. Uh, with Alpha Planning Design, ninety-three out of a hundred, ninety-three point five out of a hundred, Township and Range eighty-two point nine. You know, both, both firms are, you know, perfectly capable of, of producing an active transportation plan, but. Alpha Planning and Design, you know, definitely exhibit, exhibited the most expertise, um, and that was unanimous with the selection committee. Um, they're, you know, they, they're definitely leaders in the field of, of active transportation, and we're excited. About the prospect of working with them, um. So, the, the staff's recommendation is approval of this, this contract.
Thanks, Levi. Thoughts, motions, questions?
I'll just make a, all my promotions, despite most of them, uh, to approve. Um, well, hang on. Yeah, just sort of to approve the warning contract to Alpha Plan and Design, to the Active Transportation Plan.
Motion to approve the contract from Aaron, second from Garrett, thank you.
I'm excited about this, this, this is good stuff.
Yeah, this firm seems really experienced, they've done this a lot, they seem like, you know, give us a good product, so.
Appreciate your time on the selection committee, Aaron, can you keep it up? Any other discussion? Any objection, go ahead, Nathan?
I'm just, uh, curious, since the parks and rec master plan is also being done, is there gonna be a little bit of. Overlap of these two, and a little bit of communication, or is that not part of the scope?
So, yeah, we're, we're wrapping up the Parks and Rec Master Plan right now. Uh, not, not really, we kind of hold those two apart, we, we said to, you know. For the, the Parks and Recreation Plan, we didn't focus on the Trails component of it, we knew that going into it. Uh, you know, certainly, I think, referring to. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Plan, I think will be a part of the. The Active Transportation Plan, when we look at destinations and connecting through our parks and that, that kind of thing, but as far as the process goes. We're kind of wrapping up the Parks and Recreation, uh, Master Plan, and so I, there's not necessarily gonna be. Back and forth between, between the plans. Yeah.
Did you get what you had hoped, I don't even know what it was or anything else, but in the, uh, negotiation, the contract and scope.
Yeah, yeah.
Did that go okay?
Yeah, so one of the things, uh, I'll, I'll just expand on that, so in the, so there will be a public engagement component part of the plan. And what the proposal said that they would do is an in-person engagement activity, you know, like an open house, for example. Or, um, or come to an event, table in a, at an event, as well as online engagement opportunities. And we, we talked about it as, as a, you know, selection committee, and we felt like our staff could handle. The in-person engagement without the consultant, they, they would just help with the materials, and rather than that, they're going to do kind of a more. I think innovative approach to engagement, we're gonna do some kind of a, a walk audit, or a bike audit, that's a little more hands-on going. You know, inviting members of the community to go out and assess conditions, um, in different parts of, of our community, and, and provide feedback that way. So they're, they're gonna facilitate that, um, you know, we'll, we'll definitely support that, that activity quite a bit as staff as well. We felt like that would be more, um, more beneficial, and, and that, you know, than. And, and using their expertise to facilitate that, and that we could have, we, we will engage the public at, you know, something like Heritage Days, or. Um, potentially like a fun run, but, uh, but we can handle that as, as city staff. And then give, you know, give the consultant what we've learned.
Anything else, any objection to voting? Team, I must proceed with the vote, if you're in favor of awarding this contract to Alpha Planning, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, as long as, and, and by the way, the forty-seven thousand dollars was a grant provided. From the state through UDOT Planning.
Yeah, thirty, well, yeah, so.
We spent our money on this one.
A little bit, thirty-five thou, so thirty-five thousand came from UDOT. Um, seven thousand is coming from Walkability Virtual Academy. Funding that we received, and then five thousand's coming from the general fund, so, yeah.
It means their grant you applied for, or how did, how did it be?
Correct, yeah, yep.
Yeah, the walkability thing was really tied to us going through the training and all that. Okay, thanks for that vote, uh, thanks for that discussion, next we'll, uh, spend some more money, real money this time, awarding a contract, perhaps for landscape structures. Tom, given the two agenda items, are we taking these in the proper order still?
I was going to request the council reorder these.
Oh, well, I must have been getting those brainwaves from you. Counsel, I asked dental consent to suspend the agenda and reorder items nine and ten, as listed. Is there an objection to that? Okay, let's do it, Tom, let's take up, uh, uh, construction of phase one of Ridge Line Park.
All right. So, what started out as just a contract, uh, heading on, turned into, I'm, I'm gonna give some. Background, background information to this, I'm gonna give some financial information to this, timelines and everything else, so. I'm gonna try to pay attention, if you get a bit drawn off, I'll speed it up, and if you have questions, please interrupt me, it's, uh, just fine, so. Uh, I wanna start out with just the breakdown about the development agreement, how, how do we, how do we come about Ridge Line Park, City Park? So through a development agreement with, uh. This, this team is actually here, with Visionary Homes, so if you have any question for them, feel free to call them up as well, but. Through development of Ridge Line Park's development, uh, they gave eighteen point three acres to the city. For the purpose of developing a park. Um, the initial agreement did get into a whole lot of details, but in June twenty twenty-one, um, more details on how that park was to be developed came about. Um, primarily the financial end of things, there was a, uh, the, uh, development, excuse me, Ridge Line and Visionary. Request, or, sorry, there was an initial payment of a hundred eighty thousand dollars from the development, uh, from Visionary. Purpose of that was to get a design started for a park, and then the city with one, within one year of that, receiving that money, would begin that process. And then after collection of five hundred forty thousand dollars in impact fees beyond that hundred eighty thousand. City is obligated to spend seventy-five percent of those fees collected, or four hundred and five thousand dollars. Within that following fiscal year. Uh, applies each increment of five hundred forty thousand dollars of impact fees collected, so for every five hundred forty thousand dollars of impact fees. We are obligated to pay at least four hundred and five thousand dollars to develop into that park. Um, so far to date, there, there are fifty-six single-family dwelling units. That have been permitted, eighty-four townhouses and four ten-unit condominiums. Um, we've collected so far nine hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred sixty dollars in impact fees, and so we're still in that first increment. However, within very quickly, then about thirteen more building increments, we're gonna be in that next increment, so. I'd anticipate that we're on the hook for, for obligated, um, spend another four hundred and five thousand dollars starting in July. Of next year, or this year, excuse me, so that's kind of the background on the development agreement with Visionary Homes and the city, um, any questions so far? Okay, so how the timeline, uh, sometime January twenty twenty-two, Blue Line was contracted to perform a feasibility study. For this whole section, at this point, all we had was broad land, yeah. Um, there was a concept kickoff later that day in January, through February, March of twenty twenty-two, there was a city council meeting. There's Parks and Recreation Committee meetings, public open house meetings, just trying to get input on what this park should be developed as, so there's a lot of. Lot of interface, the staff, the public, elected officials, April twenty twenty-two, the, the finalized concept was done. And cost estimates were provided along with the feasibility study. In April twenty twenty-two, later on, a resolution was passed by council, pursuing a land and water conservation fund, uh, fund grant. And committing at least one million dollars in matching funds to build this park. Um, in April twenty twenty-two, we applied for a land and water conservation fund, fund grant. That grant was our, our initial, uh, I'll get into more detail on the finances there. Uh, more on the timeline, November twenty twenty-two, Blue Line, we entered into a contract, and I believe. Councilmember Sweden, and I think it was former councilmember abuse, was, uh. On that selection committee for that, that, the contract for design of phase one, based on the concept that was developed through the feasibility. Um, through January, through the year twenty twenty-three, we were going like crazy on design. There's steering committee formed with the city planner, me, the engineer, Parks and Recreation Committee member, Kendall Walker. Um, Parks Manager, uh, Ian Rod Elwood, Recreation Director, Ian Chad. Chad, uh, there's councilmember LaRson, uh, city manager was involved to some extent, the mayor was there when he could be. So, uh, these were intermittent meetings, we were going through ten percent concept confirmation, schematics. Ten percent, thirty percent, sixty percent, ninety percent, ninety-two percent, ninety-nine percent, ninety-nine point nine percent. And we finally reached a point where we went to bid in December. Uh, meantime, in October twenty twenty-three, we received, we applied for a grant of one point two million dollars. With the city matching another one point two million dollars for a total of two point four million dollars. We were only awarded one point one million, um, it was a little less than what we were hoping for. So we actually, we, that's where we requested an increase to the land and water conservation fund. For another three hundred and eleven thousand dollars to cover some of that gap. There's a high likelihood we're gonna receive that this month, so if we are successful, we will have one point two six. Four million dollars in grants, uh, or match, and we would have to match that for over two point five, two nine million dollars. Four million dollars in grants uh, or match, and we would have to match that for over two point five, two nine million dollars. Sorry if we're buzzing through these numbers, but I can go back at any time to go over those. On June twenty twenty-three, so I'm going to go back to the construction of the budget just a little bit. At ninety percent, we've got a cost estimate that was. Four point one million dollars. And steering committee was just flabbergasted. We're like, well, we're not going to be able to come up with that much money. So. What we did, we tried to value engineering a lot of things out. We reduced, there was seventeen things we looked at. We reduced the amount of, of uh. I think of rail, boardwalk, and we took out the big, the big giant pavilion that we wanted to get in there. So. It affected programming. Now we reduced the number of small and large pavilions and. We did everything we could to get it down and uh, the results were, we got it down to about. Two point seven million dollars. By the, the engineer's estimate provided by the designer. We're still a little over budget. So we, I, well, it was the team's idea, I guess, to try to uh. Come up with ways to make sure that we're, we're able to build a functional park. But um. Not go over. So what we did. I think I got some of these things messed up, but uh. What we did was try to do, we used a strategy called additive alternates. So we had a base bid which just included one larger pavilion, one smaller pavilion, a lot of the trail, a lot of the boardwalk and things we did. Some of the amenities like gaga pit, uh. Boulder climbing, but instead of three routes, we went with one with an add alternate for another one. Uh, we had add alternates to have another uh, pavilion, both a large one and a small one. So. The idea was have a base bid. It was hopefully under the amount of money that we had budgeted and be able to cherry pick. Select items from these add alternates to add to the base bid to come up with our budget, budgeted amount. That made the sense. So. We're. Trying to hit that two point two million dollars. And what that is, is uh, is the two point five from the grant and city match. Minus the playground, which we'll be hearing in just a minute, two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollar. And then subtracting out design costs. That left us two point two, two nine million dollars to play with. So we're trying to hit that target through these things. Sad part is, we didn't, we uh, we got bids. We put out in December, we received bids on Jan twenty-ninth. There's only one bidder. That submitted. It came in three point six to seven million dollars for the base bids. We're almost double what we were hoping. And then with the alternates, it comes up to five point three one seven. That, that's the, the dream park, right? So. We're, we're here today just trying to figure out what to do with this. Uh, I, I have up, up here some ideas that the uh. The steering committee met today, came up with some ideas. I think the preference of the steering committee was, let's see, one, two, three. Or is try to work with DWA and reduce the scope of work to get it down to that two point two million dollars. Um, but at the same time, there's some risk with that grant. So. I'll go through the options that I've spelled out. First one, obviously, is do nothing. We surrender the grant money, but uh, that's, I don't think that's the intent. We really. Want to keep that grant. That's a lot of money that could help us do it. So. I, I would recommend going that one out, but I would put it up there anyway. Uh, if we do that, we also have to renegotiate an agreement with Visionary because we're now, we're not making wise for that. That I agree with that mentioned earlier. Uh, we could rebid the project. Um. I reached out to some of the folks that expressed interest early on in bidding and, and very far into the process. I says. You know, just have a frank conversation. I'd rather not say who they are, but uh, I said, tell me what we did wrong. Why didn't you put in on it? And the one of them, the first one that I talked to, both of them says, when we started gathering numbers from our subcontractors and putting them into our bid sheet, it. It, it was obvious that we weren't going to meet your engineer's estimate of two million dollars. So there's one red flag. Then all the additive alternates. Um, the design consult, Blue Line. They didn't put a whole lot of effort into defining what was entailed with each additive alternate. All they said was add a boulder. And then in, in pre-bidding questions, people were saying, well, what does that mean? Is that, is there any changes to landscaping? Is there more curving? Is there more surface area? And uh, the designer says, yes, you're going to have to figure that out. And that was true of all thirteen of the add alternates. You know, adding a pavilion, there's more concrete that's required, there's more footings required, there's some, there's less landscaping, less sprinkler heads. But it wasn't well defined. So that was another red flag to them. Both of, both of them were both uniform and expressing those concerns. So. They didn't want to take the risk on those additive alternates. So um, they chose not to bid. Uh, that and, and like I said, the, it was really apparent that we weren't going to hit the budget that we had. Um, the, uh, we'll go through some more options here. Like I said, we can rebid the project, but if we do. I'd rather just do away with the add alternates and just have a base bid and have, make sure that that's well defined. And any additives that we want to make or any improvements later, we have to try to get some more money for, for a grant or a refund and to do those other things. Um. The other one is uh, if council so willing, give us one point four million dollars to. To uh, award a contract to DWA for a three point six million dollar. We can start over too. Just toss everything, all the work we've done over the last two years, three years. Start over, but again, it's putting the uh, grant money at risk. Um, I mentioned the preferred alternative by the steering committee was to work with DWA to reduce the scope of work. And like I said, I want to reiterate this, but. When we applied for that grant, we had very detailed bid items, including a description and quantity. So if we're going to reduce the scope, let's say trail, if we promised the grant folks that we were going to put ten million miles of trail in, and we only put one million mile of trail in. You know, that puts us at risk on this grant. So any, any negotiation and reduction of scope of work, I'm going to be very cognizant of. Making sure we're not at risk for that grant. And I'm in communication with our grant folks. The main guy, he says we, we can't just hit an increase for it. We have to reapply with no guarantee. He, he's uh, not sure of, of reduction in scope. He has to talk to other folks and he's going to be out of town for a week or so. But in the meantime, I'd like to get some direction from council. Um, and then other, you know, and I'm, we're open. This is uh, it was surprising how far off of budget we were. I've never had anything like this happen. I've been off, but not that bad. Um, but if, if there's any other ideas from council or staff, I won't open it up to the public here yet, but uh.
Well, if you're talking about opening ten million miles of trail or one million miles of trail, I might see the problem.
Oh. So yeah, so um, here, I, I don't know that we're at a point where. Unless, unless city, unless council says okay to adjust the budget to add the one point four million dollars, that'd be my dream. We can just move forward. And award a contract to DWA. Um, but um. At this point, I don't know to, we're to that stage yet. Um, and I'm looking for direction from council here. Any questions?
What does our engineer say? When we went back and said we had one bid and that this double, what do you guys project?
Says, oh, really?
Oh.
No.
Do you get a refund from them?
Yeah, it was, I mean, I knew we were off and that's why we came up with the additives. But that far off.
I'm still in denial on really, yeah.
Because when we get the concept plan, we got estimates on building based on the concept plan. And we looked at those numbers and said, nah, no way. That's ridiculous. I think that that can be built for a third of the number. At concept stage. So now we have engineering design. And it's not for a third of the concept number. It's two X. The concept number. So we're only out by a factor of six, by the way, like.
Yes.
But Tom, the, this. Bid also, that includes the cost of all the equipment and inputs as well as labor, correct?
The three point six million? Yeah, that's the base bid. It, it includes the amenities I mentioned. It includes some trail. It includes. Boardwalk. It includes some benches, trash receptacles, picnic tables.
Right, but what is, what is the? All of those things, what percentage is the cost of inputs and what percentage is the cost of labor?
Uh, we usually don't break it down to that level. Um.
I mean, the reason I asked you for that, thinking like when Woody your park and Logan went in, I remember this was like years ago and I, for some reason I was helping like. It was a community project, right? Like the community's all there putting the playground together. So that's my question is, it's like, if, if we want to pivot it and went a totally different direction and said, we have this park, we need. Community labor to help put this aspect of the park together. Like, how much of difference would that make?
That's a great question. I don't have answers for you on that. Um, perhaps that could be part of our discussion if. Council so chooses to move in the for, forward in the direction of working with DWA to negotiate a reduction in scope. Perhaps we can take some of those things on and it can give us a, a credit to reduce their, their scope and fee. That, that's a great thought. I, I just don't have those numbers. The way that the bids were presented were, you know, four concrete, curved gutter sidewalk trails and that. How much is your bid? Four hundred point thousand?
They don't break it out. It's just input and labor.
Exactly.
Right.
So I think, and a lot of this stuff is real construction. It's big equipment moving here.
Yeah.
Form concrete.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was any aspects of the park that could be.
Yeah.
You know, quality labor, but.
The playground, which.
Yeah.
You know, sounds like we both helped put one of those together. Um. That's actually not in this bid. That's our next bid.
The next agenda item, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the rule.
Um, and you did have a picture of the bike park. The bike park is part of this bid. And is the bike park part of a requirement for the grant?
That's the teaser. Sorry. So Bike Park is phase two.
Yes.
So thanks for bringing that up. Um, this is the teaser. Um, phase two, we are in design. We just finalized our concept. Reviews to move forward. The intent on this was to go forward with phase two, try to get a UORD grant, that's new to our recreation grant. That, and hopefully use the money from the LWCF grant that we're matching as a city and using that as our match. For this UORD grant. So in, in essence, that could be of no charge to us if we play our contract.
So if we're finding this, could we move forward with phase two and scrap phase one for the time being?
If the council would be willing to fund that entirely, yes. So by the phase two, we could probably do that. Problem is, we wouldn't have the matching funds from the LWCF grants and play that.
Question? Uh, what it feels like to me is we went into this and we had big hopes and we had big dreams and we had people giving us all sorts of hope and dreams of getting a bunch of free money. And what we're feeling like is that if we're going to really go to the extent of this big park, that more of it's probably going to have to come out of our own pocket. And so I feel like, uh, just, just my opinion would be is that we probably should at least go talk to DWA and walk through what they bid, why they bid it. See what could be amended, what could be adjusted. And I honestly, I don't think you're going to get to a number that's going to be two point two and have any sort of park that you're going to want to fund. It probably is going to be more than two point two. And at that point, we would need to come back and say, this is the best we're going to get. Are you guys willing to fund more money? Or are we going to be patient? And keep going after these grants and, and trying to get more money, which we will do regardless of what is decided. We will not let off the gas. On trying to go get that free money. It's just proving to be a lot more elusive, elusive than what was originally wrong by both, you know. You know, and that's, that's not just our grant writers' fault. I mean, like the people administering the grant. Were also like, yeah, you guys are good. You guys are good. Yeah, it shouldn't be a problem. And then. Know your grant round one. And then they cut back on the LWCF money for no reason. They didn't tell us why or how. Didn't ever happen. You know, the, our grant guy had never even seen that happen.
They mis, miscalculated. They just put it incorrectly.
It could have been a fast pay or typo. I mean, to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars because of a typo. Now, they've told us we're going to get that back maybe next month, but. I'm not going to believe it till I see it. But that's part of the problem of why we put out this amazing bid package. And because we thought we had X number of dollars and it's been like cut back, cut back, cut back, cut back. And we were just. Still hoping that we could kind of pull all this together. And it's just, it's not coming together in the timeframe that we, and we're told it was going to come from.
Could I interject to that? I feel through the value engineering process that I explained before. We cut back uh, to as much as we can. So I, I don't know where we're going to get down to the two point two million dollars.
So here's another question then. Um, if we, one of the options you proposed, scrap the work we've done the past two or three years, start fresh. What if we did something like. Scrap the design for the most part, but kept. Only the, the sidewalks around like the, the wildlife area, so the nature park area essentially, and created a second firefly park. Like, if we were going to re. Apply for a grant for just that portion, what timing, like how quickly could we reapply for a grant? And still be within our one-year timeline to spend that um, the money that we, that we need to spend from fees?
So we're obligated now to spend that one hundred.
What's the deadline?
Five dollar, uh, the end of this this weekend. But we, we've spent a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in, in design fair, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in design fees, but. Um.
Sorry, Tom.
It goes open right now. And it closes the middle of March. So I don't know that we have a concept that we can get to that level this year. It'd have to be a twenty twenty-five application. We're going to pursue that LWCF.
I mean, you have a concept, you have sidewalks. You took everything else out but your trails, right? I mean, that's your start, that's a A starting point, maybe.
Yeah, so.
But you're giving up the million you already have.
Right.
Yeah.
You have a million in your pocket and if we scrap everything, that's all in jeopardy. In fact, just by cutting back, it might be jeopardy. So there's just still a lot of things that we got to get. Direction from and like we just got the bids this week.
It was Monday at five o'clock. Yeah, so. And that, and that's why I apologize. There wasn't a whole lot of information for you. It's just because it's a scramble to try to bid it to you.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to clarify when we're contractually obligated to spend the money on the park. And my understanding is it's the next fiscal year. So once we get it. Within one fiscal year, we have to budget for it for the next fiscal year to spend it. So twenty-four, twenty-five. Did we, so did we get? Four hundred and five thousand last fiscal year? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So we have an issue.
Port a lot. We have an issue. Think about it. I, I think we've only issued forty permits since this year, twenty twenty-four.
Right, but total, but total from the beginning of Ridge Line to the end, do, do we get to, I guess it's seven hundred and twenty thousand really is, is the number. Once we get to that number, the next fiscal year is when we have to. By that, you know, by that uh, contract. Spend. Spend four hundred and five thousand.
Yeah, you're welcome to look closer into it. My impression was that we were obligated this year.
Okay.
So I'm very cognizant of the commitment the city made to Visionary. Um. Help me understand exactly what that is. Was it to spend the impact fees? On this park or was it to spend the impact fees on this park? And this was when I was doing other stuff. Not on the island. Was it to also, was there a commitment to? Uh. To commit city funds to that as well? Beyond the four hundred thousand that's due now and the seven hundred thousand that'll eventually come?
No, um, we were obligated to spend seventy-five percent of the fees collected at those increment levels that described.
Park impact.
Right.
And just to clarify, you guys, you said a minute ago, we would be losing that million dollars grant, right? But that's not money that's in our pocket, correct?
Correct.
So we're actually not losing money. It's just an opportunity of money, correct? We're not out any money. The only money we have to spend before June is this four hundred thousand dollars, correct? Before then, yeah.
Yes.
Well, we have. The, we have, we, we have received the grant award. We haven't received the money. We don't see the award.
It was on the money in our bank account. So we could recant that with no, uh, with no obligation to pay back, right?
We, we haven't received the money. There's not.
Yeah.
We just had the contract. It was actually, I mean, October.
So we have a room full of construction experts here. Uh. Tell us what to do. Is this how it works? Or doesn't work or what? You can be candid, you know, we'll, we'll take, we'll take whatever advice you have for it.
So I, I think part of it.
Come on. Actually, we are.
Uh, I'm Ben Moss, uh, Visionary Homes. I think part of it.
I think part of it does come down to when the initial. The initial cost estimates were procured versus when you actually got your bidding. We've seen prices go up substantially over the past three, four years. So that might play a role. Um, what I often see as estimating and in development is that. Every, every single one of those trees has a price tag, right? And, um, sprinklers have a price tag. All the sod has a price tag. Um, it just, it just kinda all adds up and how big this project is, every acre is. Forty three thousand, five hundred and sixty square feet and five dollars a square foot for sod and sprinklers. You're pushing a couple hundred thousand dollars, so. Stuff just costs money and we've seen our expenses. Go up quite high, especially on the development side. Over the past couple of years, so I don't know when you originally got your cost estimates, but that, that probably could play a role.
Yeah, that's certainly true. Thank you for those comments. Um, you know, C N P O meeting on Monday was about. Cost overruns for around. Cost overruns on eight hundred West Trail. Um, we went back to the cog on our twelfth West. Project for cost overruns. There's no, there's no doubt that. Strux and expenses are just skyrocketing. We're just not, we're just not. Our estimates are not keeping up with reality. Uh, I will say that it's, it's a little bit nerve wracking for me to. Accept a bid that. Seems so much, that is so much higher than we thought it would be when there's only one bidder. That, that, for me, that's a red flag. And, and you explained, well, you know, why we may have only had one bidder. There might be a remedy for that, but it does mean backing off for a bit to try to get another bid. Another interested company.
And that, that's a great avenue. The, the, uh. That second, third to last boy, um. Suggesting one of the options being to work with D W A. I think by state procurement rules, you're allowed to do that before you enter a contract. If you have only a single bidder, if you had two, then that kinda gets fishier. If you have four, you, you can't enter any of these negotiations if you have. Bids that you haven't awarded a contract. However, because they were the only ones to bid. I'd feel comfortable to work it within the laws that we try to negotiate with D W A. Going to someone else, I, I don't think that would be appropriate without going to a competitive.
Yeah, starting over. Getting rid of the add alternates, just bid the base. But it's. It, it seems like in. Seems like we don't have a competitive bid if we only have one bidder. I mean, the competition eliminated themselves. So maybe it is competitive, but we don't have any more than one set of numbers to look at.
Yeah, and you bring up a good point in, in the, uh, both the contractors I reached out to. They're very common and see, you know, if you guys decide to go look a different direction, you know, make sure we really wanna work with you. I think we may have better success if we bid again. But at the same time, like I said, our original budget estimate was two million dollars that we advertised. They, they weren't comfortable bidding on even the base bid. With that two million dollar engineer's estimate, they could see that we didn't have the money even to do the base bid.
Uh, sorry, just for my clarification, that was an updated engineer's estimate as of when?
Uh, that was in. I had the timelines.
Well, I guess I just.
I wanna say it was Juneish. Cause that was when we did all the V E. Value engineering started in June and I think we were, had updated cost estimates. Right in June, October issue.
So from June, from October till now, we've realized the decrease on the base.
I don't wanna speak other than that. I just think. I think you were operating under. Outdated price.
So how, how hard it is, we did it in-house, we just hired a, another crew, hire a, a general, another bunch of excavators. We have a million dollars of bulk surplus. And we got how many more parks and how many more extensions? Does that mean an option?
So that, that's a great question. Um, I'll, I'll just cite how much grading is in there. There, there's some eleven thousand cubic yards. The next period of journey and. How many truck loads is that? Twelve hundred or something. A lot of trucks. I don't know that part time or temporary staff would be able to. Yeah, and, and if, if, uh, we were to do that, I think the maintenance and everything. Else in the city would be at risk.
No, I'm saying this, this hire a whole other crew to just, just to do our parks, get you know, a general, just an air with friends and trucks or. You would probably take on the garbage.
Sort of parks, construction department.
It's just a little.
I mean, it's possible, but then what are you gonna do with those importers and much down at the park?
Infinite number of parks.
Well, we got a lot of land to do.
When, when we run out of parks to build, we'll start bidding these parks in other towns.
This is only about a tenth of the parkland that we own, right?
That's what, that's what it feels. We, I think if you had a smaller, so like if you graded it, but we can hire the trucks. Say, hey, we got these. I mean, not to do all, but I think if your scope is like, okay, we got this prep. Who can do sidewalks and then just ask them to do sidewalks or, or maybe I'm up in the night.
It's, we'd have to put some serious thought into that. It's not something we were really wanted to offer in a short time. We've had to talk about things, but it's on the table to discuss.
Well, it was also discussed at staff level.
I think three of staff members asked, well, what if they asked this?
Did you have some? Okay, I wanna bring B Chad up here just a second. I think he has some comments.
Are there more than one Chad? The only other thought that I have in terms of funding that may help a little bit, but it's not gonna be dramatic is, um. Just naming rights on stuff. But that's not gonna, I don't know that that would add up to a million dollars. Often naming rights. Uh, you, you put it under contract and it helps with kind of long term things, but we may get a much more. Funding in that way, but that's the only thought that I have.
How do we chase that?
Um, there's kinda two ways. You can, you can hire that in-house. And, uh, they generally get kind of a bid plus a commission. Or you can hire that out, you can contract that out. Those, those are generally the two ways that the city go about. But we don't have a name for the park, so, you know.
Originally, Park Park's just not doing it.
Um, Chad, at the last Parks and Rec meeting, somebody was talking about the hired skate park. And the funding that they acquired to build that. So is that now, I mean, that we looked at as well or is that like a possibility?
Yeah, we haven't perceived that at all, but, um, yeah, certainly now.
Private donor.
I have some inside information on. How that private donor came to contribute such a large amount of money.
Well, I mean, I think I understand where it came from, where, with, they persuaded to donate more.
Depends on if we have another pandemic.
Gen- generally large donors like that are. Put money behind things they're passionate about. So if we have an element of a park that they're passionate about, it, it needs to go forward. Yeah, and often I would, my recommendation would be to hire that out. We could try to chase that. In-house, but it, that's not really our cup of tea and it would be at the sacrifice of, of our regular services. As has been mentioned before in terms of building ourselves. Those would be my thoughts.
I had a resident ask me if we would be willing to, if I would, if I thought the council would be willing to name the Morgan Farm. Uh, with naming rights, I'd say absolutely. Yeah, brilliant. And I said, well, what are you thinking? And they said, well, you think the council would go for the Microsoft Morgan Farm? That sounds like it's worth a lot of money.
So if, if we just did the full thing, does the city have that much money in?
That, that's a great question. We do have, um. I mean, we have someone. Um, we certainly wouldn't be able to cover the full five. Um, but.
The three point six.
That would be a stretch, but we could probably do it.
You can't get reimbursed if you spend it.
Right. Grants have to come before it's spent.
So this is where we can, uh. See if they wanna prepay some impact fees on parts.
They, they're actually a later agenda item. But perhaps we re, we renegotiate that official four hundred and five thousand dollars if we can over the year. It's time to regroup. Um, that, that might be an option as well.
How much have we spent so far?
It's, uh, design costs and darn it. The, the contract with Blue is a hundred and eighty six thousand. We spent a certain amount in last fiscal year, thirty six thousandish this year. I wanna say we're about a hundred and thirty, hundred and forty thousand.
Was that the concept design as well?
Nah, it doesn't count the concept. I don't know what that contract was. I'd have to get into my computer. I, I have.
I think it was something like twenty five.
I mean, what's the rough estimate of what we had to spend? We've spent some.
So, yeah, so that was out of the initial B payment of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That design was supposed to start with that one. And then the four oh five. Was based on. Collection of, uh, four hundred and, what was the increments?
Yeah, it's for the construction of the park, not, not design. Design is separate. That's the, that's the one eighty.
Hundred eighty thousand dollars that was initially given. And it was basically a credit for the first.
We gotta, we gotta start building stuff with that.
So what is, what does the option look like to use four hundred and five thousand dollars? Towards putting in a parking lot where we know a parking lot is gonna go and then pausing for twelve months to regroup. And letting go of that grant money. And pursuing it again in a year.
So. As you were just saying that, I was thinking this grant is good for two or three years.
Although our rest.
So this is phase one, but maybe we have a phase one A build the parking lot. That, that's a great, great thought.
Yeah, did, in my mind, the answer to that question is, is what do they expect to be built? To not jeopardize the grant money we have. That's what we need to figure out.
Something that, this is going to be a park. There's, this is not gonna be something else. Parking lots are expensive. I feel sure we can use four hundred and five thousand dollars on payment. And that, that park, that parking lot can also help accommodate our new fields right here by City Hall. If people choose to use an empty field to go play in. It can serve as a parking lot for that as well.
So I like that, that line of thinking. Um, if we break up this first phase into. Some phases and just kinda plug away, but it might bias a year or two.
One A.
One A, I love it.
We're already like one A, A, A. Yeah, that's fine. I just.
Do whatever we can do.
Is that the direction the council? Is, is there, I mean. They awarded the grant and they never wanna hear from us for three years until they find out we spend the money? And then they'll re, and then they give us the, I mean.
Well, that's how, how it works is you go spend money. Then they come and they make sure you checked out your eyes and dotted, you know, dotted eyes, crossed your t's and then they reimburse you. So we're at risk if we go ahead and spend the money ahead of time and they don't like and we don't get. We don't fulfill what they want or expect us to do, we might not get the money. So that I think is what we need to understand. And if they're okay with saying, yeah, you can have one A, B and C over the next three years, then fantastic. We'll move forward as fast as we can. But we just don't wanna, we wanna at least understand the grant and what we're jeopardizing before we move forward.
That's what I'm asking for. I mean, if, if there's, if. If they have no feedback for three years, the Nibbly city is actually going to spend this money. I mean, you're exactly right, Eric. Saying we spend the mon, saying we're gonna spend the money and not spending the money just puts our grant at risk. But that also encompasses that money. That L W C F can't use for other, other. Perhaps worthy and budgetable project.
Yeah, okay. So here's my personal opinion then, if anyone cares. I would prefer to give up the grant for a year. Let it go and then regroup our design. And look at our finances and say, okay, in two years, can we pull out more money from our general fund? And look at, like, building a park in two years then. Use the four hundred and five thousand dollars and once we hit that next mark, benchmark towards a parking lot and some initial improvements that we know will need to go in for a park. Maybe some utilities. And pursue a grant at a later time, but that's one of five, so let's hear it.
I mean, why not do? The least of one, if you want one A, why, why not, why make one A just a parking lot? Why not make it enough to get, to spend the grant?
It just see, yeah, it, it seemed like there's a, a rush. From the grant people to accept this. Or it seems like there's a rush, like we're, we're obligating ourselves to be putting up more money. If we take grant money now, we're obligated to be spending more money. In the near future, right? So rather than obligating the city to say, okay, within three years, we have to spend three million dollars. I would rather say, whoa, hang on, no one's clamoring for this park at this moment that I know of. Why don't we just wait? And reapply for grant next year.
Yeah, and, and so I think the key to that, I, I, I think I heard what you're bolting in, but you're making great points. The key to that is to. Understand what the grant for. Will, will. If there's a way to salvage something, let's try to do that. If there's not a way to salvage.
That's fine. If there's latency in the timelines, that's great. So if there's not, then.
Timeline and scope of work.
Yeah, and scope of work, but I don't wanna put, I don't wanna obligate the city to be spending money. With a design that we're gonna be scared to spend money on.
And we hope to have some of that answer, but the guy that runs the program's on vacation for another ten days, so.
So, um, the other thing that's, that's new. Is we are working on a Parks and Rec country grant and we have. Surveyed our residents about where they think we should be spending. Parks money, not that this isn't, not a great project, it is a great project. They're looking for athletic kids. They're like for indoor rec space looking for athletic.
Again, like I said, people are not clamoring for original park park. That I know of, but.
But the grant is not for parks. This is what that we got qualified for.
The grant is for this project.
If you applied for a, a soccer field, it doesn't apply.
No, and in fact. In fact, these guys apparently rumor is that you work in L C E. The, the land conservation, they're not paying money for those soccer fields.
Yeah, they want.
It's all about putting the grant at risk. But, I mean, I, I think you have great logic here. Myself. The agenda item tonight. If I, I mean, we're not done discussing this necessarily by any means, but the agenda item is should we award a contract? For the bid amount. With construction of phase one. So I'll take that as a motion to either continue this or deny. I won't take it as a motion. Which, which, what would you like to motion to do?
Uh, it seems like there's a lot of questions and negotiate that instead of answer. I'd like to do a motion to continue it.
Okay, so a motion to continue that is the, the discussion, the consideration of the word of the contract. And a second from law and we can still talk about it.
And you were gonna talk to them to see if we can clarify and get closer. Obviously, we're not gonna be three point six, but we're gonna talk to see that. Can we narrow this down or?
But is that the direction council would like to do?
See how far you can get.
Bringing up, I asked Levi to bring up the actual agreement between Visionary Homes and, uh, Nibbly. So it's also in teams. It's, I put a Z on it cause it was so, so late to the game on this subject, but, uh. It basically, if, if you wanna redo it, we can all redo it. Um, it, it outlines the performance measures of our obligations, so. Five hundred forty, we need to spend that money. Um, Ben and I had a side conversation with. Five hundred and forty, we need to spend that money. Um, Ben and I had a side conversation with Chad speaking. You know, it it's, the agreement is for a park, not a parking lot. You know, so not a trailish. It's the agreement commits us, obligates us to a park. Then that's a legitimate concern, you know, like uh. Spending money is one thing, getting that grant, but like you said, as soon as we spend some money, we're obligating ourselves. To spend more money later. We just have to be careful of that. So I'm hearing a recommendation to work to contact D W A. To see where we can get this project. And if we can come something within the next three weeks. Close to the two point three million or something, come back and with, I'll present that information to you. Is there anything else that? Council would like me to look into? Yes, council.
So thank you for putting this agreement in, because that's what I was going to ask for before the next time. When I read number two, design can be included as well. In what we spend the seventy five percent of. So another option too that we can think about is um. That we could just eat the design money that you had here and go back to a different design. And spend all the money we wanted on that list this leisure all star. Is that correct?
So. We have the, I mentioned the hundred eighty six thousand dollar contract. Yeah, we also have a contract. What's that one? Is it right roughly seventy six thousand dollars? For design of phase two or yeah, phase two of the park. That's the contract. Now, I I've brushed this into the accelerated concept and everything. I intend to apply for the U R grant. Middle of next month and is we okay with that? So spend more design, no, no money, but more design. So I I'd like to continue, you know, just in case everything, if all the pieces fall together, I'd like to continue on that path. I hate to miss another year on that one, so. Um, I'll 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 get you, I'll get numbers on how much we spent so far with the blue line. And then I'll forecast what I expect that we will be spent by uh the beginning next uh. Council meeting, so, yeah. Yes.
If I remember correctly, this grant is from. It has a focus on trails.
So this is the Land and Water Conservation Fund and and this is through the National Parks, so um. This L W C F grant is for parks and things of that sort. Um. The outdoor rec grant, the U R grant that we're pursuing for phase two, that's like almost anything outdoor, trail bikes, things of that sort.
But U R wouldn't pay for, say, pickleball.
Correct.
It's more of an outdoor type act two, whereas the land and water conservation is a little more open. To those.
They'll pay for the pavilions and trails and the pickleball courts and Gaga pits and stuff, so it's for park development. Yeah, it is. Can she have something, Justin, to find that?
Derek, yeah, take care of.
Great.
Well, clarify that grant and we'll uh. Get all the design information, costs. See how that affects the the grant.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to uh. And to continue this discussion, though, our uh wasn't part of the motion and everyone okay with continuing till our next meeting. Play or whatever, general consent for that. For that clarification. Any more to say?
One of the thing is that these other people that didn't want to bid on it because there's such a variance, if we tell them that, hey, instead of two hundred is going to be. Two million is going to be two point five or something.
No, I I I believe if we saw another. Six, six hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars, I I think that would get their attention. If we if we choose to rebid, so, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I was pushing. I don't think we have a competitive bid. You know, it's always, we have one bid, but. By my definition, it's not competitive, so we can work with D W A. That's what we've asked you to do. And then when we see how far we get there, we say, well, we either have to rebid this thing or go with D W A or quick break stop. All praise. Good, right? I understand the implications to money. That's not our, but what's. Okay, those in favor of continuing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will. Bring this back. Thank you, Tom. That's a. Lot of good work. Allow to get us here.
Yes, sorry.
Sorry, I failed you.
No, I feel like I go back because you just got these bid numbers back. I feel like you probably were stressed. You didn't have a lot of time to prepare, so sorry if that was felt like grueling.
I appreciate. I'll get some sleep tonight.
Yeah. So next, uh, with revised agenda, we're going to talk about playground equipment in this park.
That's right, so we're backing up one.
Would you like to tell us about the uh item to consider awarding your contract to landscape structures for playground equipment in this park?
Could I make a recommended motion?
No, you, yes, you could recommend a motion.
Bring up this, the agenda.
You can make a staff recommendation.
What, sorry, what which which document do you? Okay.
So, in the case of this project. In an effort to reduce costs even further. We tried instead of adding playground equipment into the contract for constructing the uh, it's like part phase one. Because there's there's actually a state contractors approved list. I don't know if anyone's familiar with Utah State Contractor Contracts List. These are pre-negotiated pricings and everything that are extended, not only to state entities, but counties, cities, and everything else. There's even nonprofits that are able to do this. So through that list, um, Sontag. Uh, it's called, it's Sontag Landscape Structure, or excuse me, Landscape Landscape Structures Inc. And a subsidiary that is Sontag, their local representative for that incorporation. Um, they are on that list and they've been consulted all along through this design process. Um, budgets were based on the information they provided. And uh, when they provided us the final cost estimates for this uh. This playground equipment that you're looking at, it actually came in under our estimated budget. Once you put in the the uh. Playground equipment at two hundred fifty thousand dollars on the estimate. And then there was several tens of thousands of dollars in um surfacing. And by removing that from the contractor's award through the bidding process of the park construction. We were able to save about seventy six thousand dollars from the estimate. So this is one, this is a win, I guess.
So we don't need to actually get kids to it.
So, come on, man. So this this.
Build it in the field.
This this uh.
Put it in a field.
Was voted on and selected by the steering committee. There was a few uh different things presented, but this was the one that everyone migrated to. Very farm oriented farm thing. There's a little track that you can see in the lower right hand corner. It's barn like on the structures and things like that, so. With the pricing operate offered through the Cooperative Contracts List, um, staff had recommended that we enter into a contract with the. With the Landscape Structures Inc. But based on uh the previous agenda item, I will weigh your determination.
What's your recommendation?
I would, if I were sitting on that side of that podium, I would probably continue it, yeah.
Mostly we continue it.
I have a motion to continue the award for playground equipment. Park. Discussion. I bet we could say even more if we put the bolts in. The reading directions.
That's a good question, Josh. What age or size of people?
This playground equipment, I'd say it's in the young, it's a middle range.
So, you know, former life, I was a playground rep, um, and I'm I'm familiar with the landscape structures uh. Products. Um, generally for most public parks. Therefore, uh, there's like a two to five and those are, those are more geared towards like preschool age. Those are generally installed in in elementary schools or preschool areas, but for the most part, um. Most equipment is for ages older than that, so if you'd like for my six and up. Uh, some, some park agencies will also put those smaller uh. Small piece of equipment in as well. My guess is that, and I don't remember off the top of my head, my guess is this is pretty typical. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think it's like six, six and or something like that. Yeah, and um, we're required to put signage uh indicating such. And most parents ignore that and they let their three year old climb on the way. So, but that limits our liability.
Yeah, it does happen a little, but I was just thinking in comparing it to Elkhorn Park and. So we'd be able to have parents playing on the playground, on the equipment with their kids.
Absolutely, yeah.
Doesn't get your head spun off.
If we ever get a field, we have a cool bike pump track that brings the jumps that you can get.
That last meeting was pretty neat, actually, yeah. Yeah.
Ooh, but we haven't seen the. We haven't put that out of construction, although the people that are helping. Designed it are the people that also build it. So that's a plus.
Yes.
What type of service thing are we talking about?
Here is, can you the the structured mold. Yeah, wood fiber, yes. We looked at at other engineered applying uh. The budget. We cut that out. That was one of the first steps.
Fibar, is that the right word? The wood chips.
It's just a fiber mold.
Yes, it's a wood fiber.
It's a wood mold, yeah. It's not a.
Same thing we have in our other places.
Yeah.
You replace it every so often.
Yeah, so in the park, there's other, uh, the engineering structure like around the Gaga pit and around uh. Some of the other amenities, just because of the square and chair would have been better. Having the the structure or the structural surfacing, but. For the most part, the playground, everything is is the most.
What else? Kate, did you have some other questions?
I think I just wanted to know my details on.
Sure.
What the equipment is actually like.
I don't know why we have to buy a new old tractor when we have plenty of old tractors around.
I know, but. Just put a sign up that says this is for ages eighteen and older. Anyone less than eighteen can turn on it. All right.
I like that.
We have a motion to continue award of this contract until our next meeting. Did you get who made the motion then? Okay, great, I forgot.
I understand what you're speaking.
All right, everyone understand a motion. Is there an objection to voting? Seeing none, those in favor of uh uh continuing this or. Until our next meeting, please say aye. I see that as unanimous. We'll treat it better. Um, you want to stretch your legs? It's marched into your brain. Let's stay five minutes. And come back in a better mood, I promise.
It's never a matter of.
This is typically the measure of acceptable level service. Um, it allows for unsignalized, uh, delays of fifteen to twenty-five seconds. Everything's working well. The laser scene is acceptable. It's only getting to the DZs and Fs that it really kind of gets. People get impatient. Uh, the delays become excessive in the twenty-five to thirty, in the twenty-five to fifty-second range. And people just make rash decisions, trying to cut a gap or sneak between two cars or, or do some crazy things. So we try to keep, uh, all the performance in that level service. Area. So please let me bring that up. The next one.
It's not working.
All right. So there were two separate traffic impact studies performed, um, by two different transportation engineers. Um, one of them constrained traffic on the, on the highway. So what I mean by that is it says not many, not many people are going to go on the highway. The other one left the intersection at twenty-nine hundred south and the, and the highway un-unconstrained. So they're, they're assuming that, uh, public would be using that as a, a primary motive or a primary way to travel. So in, uh, the constrained scenario, that, that's the one where they says no one's going to use twenty-nine hundred south. They evaluated thirty-two hundred south and, and the highway and that intersection maintained a level service C. So that's an acceptable level service. That, that, that means that that development, it, it build out, no one's using twenty-nine hundred south, thirty-two hundred south and one sixty-five is still performing at a level service C acceptable. Um, however, the unconstrained, um, scenario found that the intersection at the highway was level of service F immediately upon improving that. So the only mitigation that would, that would really work on that was to align it with the intersection on the other side. The reason is speeds are way fast, it's unsignalized and intersections are offset. So that increases level, uh, or the delay time. And, uh, level, level service is diminished immediately upon completion of that intersection at the current, uh, configuration. So that's kind of what these slides are, just kind of describing those different things. Um, you'll notice, I believe future third joint in here says that it fails. In one of the, I can't remember which slide it is, but it, it shows that it fails immediately by having that there. Um, again, I mentioned that the mitigating factor to make that level service C would be to align that intersection. And whether you take the east leg and loop it or hook it to the north and align it with that, uh, west leg or, or if you take the west leg, bring it down to the, the south and get those things aligned. That was the measure that, that made it an acceptable level service. But in any regard, uh, the, the development agreement city and visionary didn't include any of that work. So if we do pursue to go down that road and improve that for public access, just know that that's going to be a level service F as soon as that's, that's installed and, and that, uh, construction is completed. We did have a pre-application meeting with UDOT. He says, okay, this is our, our permit said, or the approval for the subdivision says that we have to improve this. You know, what are the parameters that are given? So we met with UDOT folks, we had, uh, the design engineer, we had visionary, I was there. I don't know that you.
I was there.
Believe I was there. So they gave us a few choices. Um, he says, uh, if, if, uh, they're going to allow that access to be improved to accommodate, uh, the public access of twenty-four feet, that they would like the intersection aligned. And, and he said, well, that's off the table. The next one was the raised median curve. It's an, with an acceleration decelerator. So say Costco and you're going to get that chicken that as you come on tenth west.
I was there too.
I, I want to give your attention back. That, that's what you're looking at in this situation, that raised curve median where you have to turn right and, and that goes a hundred feet in each direction. And I'll get to that in a minute. Um, I requested, if we're going to do limitations on turn movements, can we do a fork job? What a fork job is, I have some pictures in here, but kind of just like a directional island that's really small in nature. Kind of when you come to the intersection, it, it guides you to the right. Um, UDOT's somewhat opposed to it. They says you can try, but you're probably not going to get that one. That's because people don't honor it. They go around it and make their left-hand turn and they just drive all the way. Uh, the other, uh, uh, the other option they gave was a crash gate to limit access on the SR thirty-five. So that, what that would do, we'd get the improvements to SR one sixty-five and put a crash gate right at the boundary of, of the, uh, base seven that we saw in that first incident. So those, those are kind of the ones that were in discussion. Uh, it was a pre-application meeting, so we haven't decided which avenue to go. That's where we're here today, which we're trying to get some input from the city or from the council, sorry. Um, this is, again, I'm, I'm going to go through each option as they're posed. This is lining up. This is kind of what it would look like, either hook it to the south or hook it to the north from the east. Um, the other one was a bait raised median. Um, council member man might recognize this as that intersection to Costco. Sorry, I'm having some trouble. There's, there's other examples like that. And so what that would look like in this scenario, if we choose that, this is what that median you can stand. I, I measured out, drew this in. And so if this person, if, if we go this route, this person would not be able to access his driveway from the traveling, he would have to go or he's vague. They would have to go through here and travel through the intersection to get into their driveway. It's just encroaching a little too far there. So if, if we choose the direction, I feel that would be an, an impact to that property or they weren't expecting. Um, and, and it also creates some risk here too, because if someone uses this every day, they know that anyone coming in here is going to turn right. Except that guy. So there's a, there's an increased risk of a collision. It might be minor. It might be, uh.
Would that person, would that homeowner be able to turn left out of this traffic?
He might be able to, be able to maneuver that, but it, it creates, uh, a conflict there plus all three of these lanes. So he actually has an increased conflict by putting this, this there. Um, this is another option that we were looking at. He says, how about the center turn lane median? So this would be one, let's see if I have a picture. No, I don't have one. So this would be picture going north on tenth west and as you pass the, the, it used to be common sense through the intersection that would signal across the highway. That median that, that goes into eighteen hundred south, that development off to the west side of tenth west. Be with me there. That's what that would look like. This one couldn't, wouldn't work though, because it, it guides people here. The intent is that if, if someone wants to go here, they, if someone wants to turn left here, they come here and they, they come and they turn this way. If someone wants to turn left into here, they come here and turn left. So because these are offset, you're either, you're putting one of those directions into oncoming traffic, be able to make this work. So for example, coming south now, you have to go into oncoming traffic, be able to make that left-hand turn, turn maneuver. If we lined it up with this one and by birth, if we lined it up the other way. So this one's pretty much off the table. Um, but I wanted to, to show the council that, that option. For the other one, this is a forked top island. Um, I believe I was, I believe I found this in his hometown or something like that. This, this is more of a guide, try to guide travelers in one direction or another. So right in, right out. Uh, again, these things aren't honored, so.
It's gone now. We had to, we had to go back in time to find it.
Say those look like pretty old cars.
This is like a two thousand nine or two thousand three, I can't remember. Yeah.
The other option was the crash gate. Uh, that's, that's a crazy challenge as well. Uh, just picture that to the left there. But there are users that, that go and, and farmers and things that need access. And, and I thought it was just really minor access and very occasional, but, um, in talking to one of the farmers unrelated to this project, they were saying how busy that road actually is. Um, if we put the crash, if we put the crash gate there, um, it would, it would impose an undue hardship to users there, maybe not undue, but a hardship to the users there where they have to go in, get out of their equipment, unlock the gate, open it, travels through and then close it. Most likely will be left open most of the time. Um, but I, I say that just because, um, people have rights when there's an access easement through there. And, uh, we're now increasing the effort it takes to utilize those rights. So there may be a legal question. We might have to work that out with, with our legal team. Uh, I've heard recent rulings of just putting the gate there and offering the property owner that needs access that, that a key, offering them the key to use that. That was a hardship that was overturned by the one court ruling that I'm, I'm aware of, it's a few years ago. And so, um, I couldn't give you a citation on there.
Why is it called a crash gate?
So it's emerg, it becomes an emergency access. So let's take a water leak right here. It ends up breaking right in the middle of that, uh, that roundabout. The only way for these folks to get out, let's say a fire starts over here, I don't know. The only way for them to get out is go through that, that, uh, roundabout or use this crash gate. You can buzz through it. Fire department can also crash through it in a case of emergency. So it, it basically makes this only used in case of emergency.
So I have to keep clarified, is this, is this, uh, it's like an easement or is this a public street?
It's a very good question. So in the agreement, um, visionary was keen enough to notice that it's not a flathead road. However, um, they did a survey and I did a supplemental survey with, with another surveying group and, uh, they found that it's, it is, it's listed as a farm lane, but because we've been maintaining that for decades, we have that it's prescriptive right.
Neither city nor city.
Yes. So it is a right of way, but we can consider it public. We.
Great question.
We can or we have to? We have to in order if we're going to comply with the, the development agreement as a, and, and the approval of the free plan. But. So, uh, I'm sorry, great question for crash gate, but it becomes an emergency access if we, we lock it that way. And, and then it creates a hardship to users that need to access it. If we say, okay, we're not going to let you use that in case only for emergency, now we're going to be seeing farm users come through these narrow roundabouts that aren't intended for big combines of things. I don't even know if it'll fit, to be honest. So it, there, there's an additional hardship there and maybe even a danger to, to users there. I just wanted to help my house. Uh, right. So the answer to crash gate, and I was already on to my next question. I'm going to ask that now. Okay. And that is just to clarify, if the city, not just this piece of property, but if the city maintains a easement for a period of time, that gives the city the option for a prescriptive.
It's a prescriptive right, yeah.
It's a, it gives the option or it gives the requirement.
For a prescriptive right.
I, I guess we could abandon that.
Okay.
And, yeah, but, um, it, it does give the option, I'm sure. Uh, the, the council has the opportunity to, to vacate those rights at any time. It is a legislative decision to vacate a, a recorded right. I don't know how it works if it's not recorded at the public road. Again, it is surveyed and listed as a farm lane, but I think through prescriptive easement rules, that it could be as public, could be maintained as well. Um, so was that snow that was plowed in that picture that was bi-ar snowplow?
It was.
No?
Yeah. The only maintenance we do on is every once or twice a year, we'll go fill the potholes and grade it flat.
It's gravel road.
Yep.
Um, three questions so far. So, yes.
So we're getting jumping down. I don't know. You only suggested a crash gate going across twenty-nine hundred. Have you explored the idea of having crash gates at the end of the new roads that visionary is putting in?
We, we did, yes, for sure. However, if you'll notice here, you'll see these, these, uh, building lots right there, that one and that one. Those will have the access from twenty-nine hundred south to be able to get in their driveways of. You, you'll notice that that is the road access to get to those. So that was the only logical place to put it, but we did, we did look at that.
So if you were, so if we put a crash gate up, but suddenly there's homes that have driveway access on their twenty-nine hundred south, are. Our plows have to go all the way through this development up to twenty nine hundred flowered?
Yes. And these are just the suggestions, these are, these are the uh. The options that UDOT gave us, I guess the one thing I didn't put in here was a do nothing. Uh, don't improve that road, just utilize this. However, the there are issues with that because the fire code requires emergency access after thirty units and uh.
Well, don't improve it, you're saying visionary doesn't improve it or the city doesn't improve it?
If we do nothing, if we just leave it as it is.
So then visionary have homeowners who have to go onto a dirt road to get to their homes.
Or go through the subdivision to get to them, yes.
But even still, they gotta turn on their twenty nine hundred and twenty nine hundred would be unapproved.
Okay, okay, good, or this is a great point you made, so. As part of their subdivision, they will be improving the road from here to here to the full road half section. It's just this section right here is what we're talking about, it's from the edge of phase seven. Through the highway, so thank you for asking that question, helps clarify. So again, this will be a, I I say a full half road, they'll have curb and gutter and sidewalks, they'll have. The asphalt, twenty foot of asphalt, it it'll be, it it'll be okay to use there.
Nathan, no, um. Oh, he was making fun of my full half road comment. You mentioned two traffic studies, it seemed like, I understand, we talked about. At length, the traffic study of level of service F. On twenty nine hundred, can you tell me again? The first traffic study had nothing, it it said if we don't do twenty nine hundred, does that tell us what the level of service? Change is on thirty two hundred south, is that correct? Did I, did I miss something?
Mike, I might need your help on this one, because you did one of the studies. So, um, I can't read down, but um, like I said. I'll just before he speaks, there were two studies done separately.
Yep.
This, one of them was done by Michael Taylor here, civil solution group, another one was done by Hales. And uh, one constrained that intersection by saying. No one's using that, enforcing all the traffic generated from this development on the thirty two hundred south and highway. That one maintained a level of service C. Like all this development traffic going to here.
A level of service C on thirty two hundred south, and and one thirty two hundred south and one sixty five or?
Yes.
What intersection of one thirty two hundred south?
Uh, yes, that's the level of service of the intersection, right, so all legs are operating at an average of level of service C. Right, and and it's been a while since, so I'd have to tell, if you want to know specific movements, I have to report that, but.
Right, if I recall, front, not not from that um, trafficking back study, but the one that Hales did. I I remember there were movements that were definitely below level of service C, like, you know, left turn. Nor- north, north, northbound from thirty two hundred south was lower than that. But on average, they they take the average of the intersection.
But it was the thirty two hundred south, one sixty five intersection.
That's correct.
So in both cases, the intersection in one sixty five and thirty two hundred south were level service C in both cases. However, when this was left unconstrained and is a public access, that was level service F immediately.
It's like we need a, not a number on. Not having it, I mean, it doesn't have a level of service, it doesn't exist, right? If you, if you build it, it's an app, if you don't build it, what is it?
Well, I think the purpose of constraining those in in this analysis was just to see what. Thirty two hundred south and and the highway looked like. It's like, if we don't have that, what will that do to that intersection and then do that that study and show that it'd be acceptable?
Yeah, and I'm not a traffic engineer or anything, but I'm guessing the reason it's a level service F is because of the delay, right? Because people, if people are going to that intersection, they're trying to turn left to go north. They're just having to wait a long period of time because of all the traffic on highway one sixty five. Right, it's it's peak time, so that's.
And then having that offset adds to it as well, so it it like doubles the number of conflict.
Right, right, because to do it safely, they gotta go all the way across. They don't go, they can't go in the center turn lane, so the, I mean, that's, you're not gonna find very many gaps to do that. Aaron, do you wanna jump in here?
Well, I just had a question, so the UDOT options. If we're going to finish that three hundred fifty feet of road, is it mandatory that we accomplish one of these UDOT options?
If if we want that access on the one sixty five to be a full public access, yes, we would have to complete one of the options.
One of the ones they've offered us.
One of the other ones they offered, and this is, like I mentioned, the pork chop, right in, right out, that was something that the city was proposing. It was less intrusive to that that south property owner. And we felt it would be good, but um, UDOT didn't agree.
And they won't go if we just put up a no left turn sign?
No way, yeah. That's like putting no dogs allowed, that's like pushing age, age limits on playground. Mike, uh, Mike, is it Mike?
Oh, yeah. Sure, but yeah, no, I I was just gonna comment too, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not. That the level of service, um, even though numerically, that's how it came out in their traffic study, it's a. It it's just a safety issue to that, that you don't primarily concern about is you can set people many a lot of turns directly into each other, right? So, uh, offset intersections, they have standards and state administrative code. Uh, for, you know, acceptable spacing and this is just nowhere even close that, you know, so for this category of.
Thanks, go ahead. So the road through the commercial, are we gonna have the same issue or is that okay, cause it's lining up with the back of the road?
Fantastic, um, at this point, we met with, uh, it was through a preapplication and an application for an emergency. Access, I mean, go through one of these. So. This right here, you'll notice, has an extension on the highway. That is a permitted extension and a permitted intersection. For temporary access on the highway, so we were able to do that to to meet the fire code. But UDOT wanted to have additional conversations on how that permanent access would look when when either this is. Either that property there is is developed or when that become permanent and rumor has it. They wanna put a center median down that whole area. To limit the conflicts from the Maverick intersection and those driveways too, so. Uh, it might be a fight to get that access on there, there there's more discussion to be had on it.
So, so to follow up on that, so this other one that goes through commercial, the lower intersection. If something like the the forced right turn were put in there, there's no homes right next to it, that it would be impeding, is that correct?
Correct. So yeah, that that might work with that center cur- that curb median, that wouldn't be less, there's nothing that would be impactful. The problem with those those uh, medians is they can be in. It can't impede commercial development. People don't like them, people aren't, they they try to stay away from. Costco's not afraid of them because Costco's dragging people from three states to that, to the one on tenth west. But you know, at a smaller development like this, commercial developments, that might be a hindrance to actual function.
But so if there's no forced right turn and there's gonna be commercial there. What safety, like will there be a light there, like what safety measures are there to people can turn left out of commercial? Cause that's gonna be a level F two with commercial, right?
Yes, it 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 could be, um, it it depends, yeah. I'd have to look at it, but most likely, um. Right now, this E access lines up with the driveway to Maverick. I think UDOT's talking, we need a permanent access, it's gonna have to line up with the, what is that, twenty thirty?
Thirty one hundred.
South, or have a center median that prohibits turn movements there. And that would mess up access to to Maverick. So there's, like I said, there's gonna be more discussion on that. UDOT's gonna wanna tighten it down and limit accesses for safety purposes, safety reasons, but um. We're gonna have to find the happy medium that allows. Good commercial development, economic growth and a safe, safe road and intersection, so. Yeah, I mean. It's hard to compare this to Costco's right in and right out because two blocks away, they have tenth north. With a big old light and lots of time. So it's not like Costco is limited to raised median right in, right out, they have lots of other access. Whereas this commercial piece doesn't have that.
Sure.
They don't have thirty two hundred south that goes right into the commercial property. Yes. Uh, the path county planning office has applied for a UDOT technical grant to help study one sixty five from. Hiram to Loganish. Um, and so they're applying for that here shortly, you should know, and. Will probably come to you and ask for, I think, about three thousand dollars to assist in that study. Per the last meeting that we had, but that study should answer some of these questions. He brings up a great point, um, that that should answer the questions that you're asking about the commercial access. And it also kind of brings up the question on what should happen here too, so. Do we rush into this and complete this area here, do we let this study vet out and see what? Long term planning holds for that location, because putting, putting a curb median is expensive. Um, so we'll be investing a lot of money, if you read the agreement carefully. It says that visionary will is responsible to improve the road. From their, their boundary of phase seven to highway one sixty five. It's silent on what happens on one sixty five. Um, we'd have to have conversations with our attorneys, I think the intent was to have all of this this improved. For the access and everything else. But I don't know that it's really clear in that agreement, so based on what Justin mentioned on that that uh. Study they're doing, perhaps we postpone that, we'll let the council decide, um, provide recommendations on that, but. That's why we're here, we we just need to know what we need to do and what the council would like.
I actually think the base, the existing corridor agreement, which doesn't necessarily say where lights will go. This was in that first kickoff meeting. Doesn't say where lights will go, but they kind of talked about where lights could go and what kind of variable spacing and so on and so forth, which they're shooting for half a mile and. They were actually showing in that. Um. In that baseline, a light, if I remember right, at twenty nine hundred south. Cause there was a bit of consternation about, well, why does Nibbly get a light at twenty nine hundred south if they have a light at thirty two hundred south? That's only three blocks, not half a mile. Yeah, I thi- I think they were just showing that as a potential, it wasn't really, yeah.
Under the current agreement to go in there, I mean, that's. That's a major change to that intersection from artists now to put a signalized intersection on one sixty five. And there's gonna be a new study and likely no agreement. And it brings question on what will be allowed, you know, in the, in that agreement, I'm sure they're gonna detail how. The spacing between drive accesses and intersections and what what the mediation required for each of those different elements, so. Um, that does bring question on what to do here too. Do where? Both here, here.
Nathan.
Um, I have some questions for the developer, that's okay.
But councilman, I haven't spoken yet, so. Thank you.
Um. How many developments has visionary done the last five years?
Uh, well, I've been with visionary for about four, I would say. And maybe Ben Moss has a better idea of where he's been. In the estimate department, what would you say? Couple dozen?
Yeah, I I think.
You said the last four years, how many have we, are we in the process, probably a couple dozen?
How many of them have been along state roads or major arterial roads, arterial routes?
Uh. Again, I. Not knowing all the pro- projects intimately, I maybe a quarter of those, I mean, it just depends on. A lot of them are next to a a collector or maybe an arterial, but next to a highway like this, um, probably not as many as. As we have, I know a lot of them will shy away from these type of projects because of the time commitment and. And the additional fees that come into it, working with UDOT.
Um, if you were to estimate just now, how much that. Portion from the the yellow line essentially where the crash gates are, right, that's that part that's not up against your property would cost, what would it be?
Are you talking about just from the yellow line to one sixty five, without it, without approaching the UDOT corridor and and getting involved with the. Acceleration, deceleration, raised median line? I mean, I I have a put pencil to paper, um. I know there's, I know it would be a little bit more than just your regular twenty foot of asphalt because there's a college irrigations along there. Um, that's, and that's some of the other additional costs that would come into that, um, also nibbly blocks and four crofts. Twenty nine hundred in between, actually I think right on the Archibald property. And then it also runs along the north side of it, and you've got a couple of boxes and some. Some power pole, maybe three or four power poles to move. I think, I think ballpark, you're probably looking somewhere around a hundred and fifty. You know, for the the improvement of twenty feet from yellow line to one sixty five, but again, I. I haven't personally done any number crunching or a takeoff on that, um. It could be a little less, it could be a little more depending on what actually has to be done to get that twenty feet of asphalt, because right now. If anybody's been down that road, and I won't picture that you had with snow, I think showed up pretty well, but. It's a, it's a G trail, it's a farm lane right now, and it's on both sides, you've got a ditch, college on one side and maybe blacks to work on the others. But to improve it to twenty feet, you're looking at happen to at least, depending on where the center line lands and where your improvement falls. You may have to improve and cover two ditches to just get that twenty, twenty four feet. So they could, it could range a little bit higher, but I'd say, I'd say a buck fifty is probably somewhere in the realm of reasonable.
Is it about three hundred fifty feet, don't you say?
No, it's, it's actually closer to, I think it's just a hair or five hundred now.
Um. Okay, thanks.
That all?
That's it.
Ben, anybody else have any questions? Mayor, you've got something on your mind? You know, I, I do appreciate the brainstorming on this, you know, one thing that came to my mind, if I, if I might just throw out there. Um, is, you know, the potential to approach UDOT with a, like, right now. A a current build out of a right in, right out with a median curve and excel, excel lane at the commercial access. And crash date twenty nine hundred. You know, the the problem with just doing nothing at twenty nine hundred is you're gonna have residents from Ridge Line Park and possibly other locations. That are gonna attempt to use that farm lane and access SR one sixty five. And I can see UDOT looking to us as a developer and you as the city saying, how did you let this happen? You know, there's a, there's a potential hazard there in doing nothing. Um, one thing I do think I understand a little bit better is I have met with some of the landowners to the north. And west of the yellow line, there's not much activity to these properties to the north. You know, there's not, there's, there's actually just a couple of, couple of different uh, rancher farmers that actually. Come down that farm lane beyond the Archibald property to access their cows. You know, there's actually one field and it's actually prior to the the crash gate that actually is farmed. And the Roca Lovers are farming it, it's owned by the the church, and that's a cornfield just north of the yellow line. Beyond that, it's pasture, and so there's not a lot of farming going on, it's mostly just coming in to feed your cows in the winter. Maybe a little fence work in the summertime, and so I don't, I don't see the crash gate as being an impossibility. In fact, I al- I almost think, I almost bet that I could probably get them to sign on to, hey, I'll agree on this right, and go, yeah. Let's do a crash date, in fact, they might even see that as a benefit. They would need a key, you know, to be able to go through it, but. And if it ever got locked open, we would know, you know, within two or three different individuals who left that open, right? Um, and so the proposal that I was prepared to make tonight, although the discussion actually opens up a couple of other possibilities was. Um. In in lieu of not having to build that twenty foot of asphalt from yellow line. To SR one sixty five, you know, the visionary comes up with some kind of in lieu fee. That uh, would satisfy the council, you know, I don't, I know it's not gonna be the, the amount of money that you need to make up the shore. Into the budget for the park.
I was hoping that's where you were headed, you know, right?
Yeah, we've already established what I think that that the cost would be, right, for that asphalt, that improvement. Or there's the option of, you know, abandoning the in lieu fee and approaching UDOT. Or there's the option of, you know, abandoning the in lieu fee and approaching UDOT for. A more full access to through the commercial property even now with the same restrictions that we're prepared to make at twenty nine hundred and SR one sixty five. Um, and maybe the combination of the two. I also throw out there on the table that maybe we could sweeten the deal as well by granting some additional time on that park space agreement DA. On your first phase improvement. You know, I, of course, we would love to see that park space get developed, you know, we had an we had a vision of what what you guys were gonna do with it there and I know it would be. Obviously a boom to the Empire City at large, but mostly to the residents right here at Ridgeline Park, right? And so maybe maybe there's some, maybe we can sweeten the pie that way, you know, if if you're willing to. Try and look at this twenty nine hundred improvement a little bit differently. You know, when we put that park space DA together and talk about, hey, you're gonna improve this offsite. I I don't think any of us realize the implications that that was gonna create at SR one sixty five. And in my mind, if we go in there with a twenty foot. You know, I'm taking your crash date without any improvement. Um. There's a lot of waste potential there, you know, and when you're putting a lot of infrastructure in, moving a lot of infrastructure and then with this new corridor agreement. Everything changes because they say, oh, you're gonna have to align this anyway. Maybe alignment doesn't match. I'm I'm concerned about a little bit of waste there. Um. But yeah, I guess that's that's what I throw on the table for your consideration. You know, I don't know. We we'd love to get a little bit of um direction from you uh as we have, I think we're pretty close on. Answering the red lines and the comments on seven, eight, nine, which is the last CD set for this project. I know there's some. There's a lot of anticipation to begin building phase seven. You know, um, the condos are a little slower to sell right now. And the single families are a little bit hotter item. And so there's a few more singles in that phase seven that we'd like to get to. And then also phase eight. Um. But we we'd like to move forward in getting approvals for safe phase seven, but this twenty nine hundred does present. A challenge, especially to be able to have to do it now prior to. You know, this corridor agreement that's getting updated and and potentially fixing some of that intersection problems that. That really shouldn't land on visionary homes as a developer where we we just agreed to do a little bit of offsite right there and not follow. Everybody's problem at at the twenty nine hundred intersection SR one sixty five.
So uh, I appreciate that. I think that's my line of questioning was headed that direction, right, is that. I was on the council that was pretty happy that we get something there, right? And it was mostly a concern of. Some of the stuff we've talked about. I would guess if this that that same council was asked tonight, hey, do we still want that? They would say no, right? I think that that this is too big of a mess. Um, I think that it is tragic that an experienced developer like yourself didn't see this coming and maybe. Throw out, maybe we should realign and and talk more about that. Um. But I I I would, my direction, my hopes would be that we start to look into abandoning. That uh park from the property to the the road. And asking the developers to give some kind of fee for probably what that road would have cost at the time that they were built. Would had to build it. So when those seven, eight nines come on, I think it's when that time went kicked in. That they give us the money that that would have cost. To put towards whatever, whether it's buying property to fix this later, or if it's going towards a park, I I don't. Have a specific death last for the numbers, how much of an impact could it actually have? But I think it's um incredibly important that we get the commercial figured out too. That we don't let anything else keep going until we get. I don't know how we could do that, but when we're talking to you, don't stop talking temporarily, just start asking what the permanent is gonna look like. With or without what twenty nine hundred does. Cause I I we did it with the intent of giving these people access to that road, safety, et cetera. But I I I think that the council that that approved that or pushed for that would say. We made a mistake when we didn't ask for realignment or try to figure out realignment. And it 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 would be a bad decision now to force that. But the developer does need to give us something in return. Um, big time because otherwise this may not pass. And I think that the concern with the commercial. Maybe we hasn't that part gets set up. As part of the screen negotiation as well, but the commercial development needs to happen quicker and figure out that as well, so that we get access to that road. Sooner rather than later, because my guess is that was the last basis to their final building. And we need to sweep that process up so that we get what we need out of this. But I believe the development agreement, once we amended it, said, when we feel like the traffic is big enough, we ask that. Twenty nine sixty five, is that what it is?
Yeah, when city engineer determines.
Determines that it's a need.
Yeah, it's very big.
Yeah, without a twenty nine hundred, I would say that we could determine that there's a need, right? So that those are the proposals I suggest we consider and then talk about with the developer if we're gonna amend this.
So I I think, oh, sorry. I think. I think the only issue with that, this and it goes back to a comment Tom made is. The fire access for that to the north because although, you know. You that there's an area with more than thirty units, they don't they don't only have one access out. So for emergency access. The, well, the crash gate, but I think you still need twenty feet width to meet fire code, not necessarily paved, but. And and maybe maybe you can speak to that, Tom, but. I I don't think you could just put up a crash gate. I think there's still need to be some kind of improvement along twenty nine hundred. Yeah, I don't I don't know, Tom. Is that is that, am I misspoken there of that?
Fire code, my understanding requires a second access of thirty units or more. It 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 would count for everything down here. And possibly right here, but nothing up in here. Uh, paint the picture of this being eliminated through an explosion or water line or whatnot. Having a fire over here, they there was the only way to get in here would be one direct. This is only a single access. My opinion at that point, the other access would have to come from somewhere else. And and part of knowledge better.
But roundabout would be considered an intersection, but rather than being able to go around.
Right, that would that would be one access.
So so that's what I was actually driving now is, you know, if we talk about. The possibility of getting rid of this twenty nine hundred south first, first, you should ask, what about safety, right? Um, we can do a lot of things. Unfortunately, the inconvenience people I wish we couldn't, but we can, but we can't build things that aren't safe. Right? And we have fire codes and everything else to to make sure that we're not sacrificing safety. We won't sacrifice those physics. But then I started asking, you know, why twenty nine hundred south beyond safety? And I think the city. Was worried about the impact on thirty two hundred south. Without having twenty nine hundred south available for another way for people to get. Out and about from Ridgeline Park. Um, Ben, I'll ask you. The beyond safety, what about convenience to residents of Ridgeline? Park and certainly a crash gate's not very convenient and all the other things we've talked about are not very convenient, but in your mind, when we were. You know, looking at offsite improvements, talking you into that, were you thinking that that adds convenience? And mobility to Ridgeline Park residents or are you worried about? And and if so, are you worried about taking that convenience away?
I I'm not worried about taking up the convenience. It does provide a minor amount of convenience. I don't think, well, none um. Residents heading north to Logan, coming out of twenty nine, because you know, UDOT's not gonna approve anything without a. You know, a restriction to to preclude that. There wouldn't be as a minor convenience on those coming from Logan, coming south on SR one sixty five, turning right into there. I could see somebody coming home from work from Logan, if they're not already coming home from the other way down thirty two. Um, turning in there rather than going all the way to the light and then down thirty two and then back up. So I see that as a potential convenience. Um, but it's minor because of the restrictions that you definitely placing on it.
Yeah, I I mean, I think the UDOT restrictions take away any convenience that could have been there, but I'm just trying for you to think back. Did you expect that? Without realizing those restrictions, were you expecting that convenience for the people that live there?
I I I think my mind is about the same place it was when we originally talked about this, you know, um, even though there was a big push to try to. I I think the idea intent would alleviate traffic on thirty two by building the twenty nine, but you know, with the traffic studies and our pre preliminary conversations with you dot. I think we anticipated some kind of a restriction there because of the intersection mis misalignment. You know, despite despite, you know, whatever experience we might not have had back then. I think we all recognize that both one, there was a right of way issue there. And that's why we had written into the code, hey, you know, that the city was gonna take and indemnify us for building on something that wasn't a bona fide. Um, a a prescriptive easement, if you will. Um. But I think we all recognize the challenges with trying to do that. And that's why visionary homes wasn't in favor of. Of trying to build that offsite as part of the development, but we relinquished enough to get to to be able to make it happen. Realizing that we would try to make something work down the road and and this is what and this is us trying to make something work. You know, and try not to delay the project and delay phase seven. One thing I might add, you know, we bring up an issue on. If we just put up a crash gate and don't improve that roadway at all, it doesn't necessarily provide a a bona fide fire, the emergency access. Um, but perhaps there's a hybrid situation where we improve that farm lane sufficient. To gain fire access, so no asphalt. And maybe it's piping one ditch or the other and and a widening and and maybe your pit runners will face put down to to create that. That better right away. And and the crash gate together. And maybe the in lieu fee is less because there is quite a bit of improvement that would still need to be done, but I think that might be. In my mind, the best way forward um to figure out what that in lieu fee would be on a minimum improvement to get fire and a crash gate. And that seems like it might, it may be Tom's got something that would be a death metal of that, but that seems like it might be the middle of the road. It still allows the project to progress. And then really the focus is how to get the commercial access to to function. Cause we all, we all have a full intent of making that as much of an active as we can, otherwise. The commercial uh property becomes less desirable and less viable as a property, you know.
So I wanna follow up on the commercial. Tom, did you have something on the?
I did, cause I just wanna, Michael pointed something out to me. Might be viable. So I've been I've been neglecting these private alleys and things. As as that second access, perhaps we look at it this way, we have this is the first access to get in here. This is their second and uses private lane as that, so.
To get around the.
I think that would provide the functionality there. I'd have to check with the fire marshal and perhaps there'd be some. Additional restrictions on that private lane if that's gonna be the that second emergency access. But but to uh Councilman Lowerson's point, you know, that that might require additional improvements on this one, so.
I think there may be a little bit more room to wiggle on this being that second access, so I'd like to explore that.
The in lieu fee went from fifty to a hundred and fifty.
So the now let's talk commercial a little bit. We we've talked about the, Nathan, you talked about the. Let's push the commercial schedule. Are you asking to push the schedule that says we figured out what the heck we're gonna do with commercial access? Or are you expecting actual commercial, that we can do something to actually. Uh, accelerate and a commercial development?
Uh, I think I was going off of the fact that the agreement currently states that. When that road should be developed is when that commercial is developed or when city engineer says it's time to develop that road. So it's one or the other. Uh, so an adjustment to phasing may be part of the negotiation, but there's a lot of. Undones still, but I wouldn't say a lot more of the other.
I mean, Ben, I assume you guys are not planning to operate the commercial property yourselves. You wouldn't for someone to buy it, develop something there, what?
We are not commercial developers. We do have a sister company that our commercial arm, so we do have a company that's actually based here down Ironwood. That does commercial development. The the challenge with trying, with trying to force commercial at phase ten right now is just there's. There's not a lot of viability. And so what you're gonna get there is not not the the greatest commercial. What you need is house tops first. And then your commercial makes sense. What I what I would be willing to do is is to switch the focus to let's work with you got on. What can we get at that access? Right? Not not as a temporary um emergency access, but let's let's move. And shift our focus on trying, instead of trying to mix up the work at twenty nine. Even if we propose even a temporary raised median curve with an acceleration and a deceleration lane. With the hope that once this corridor agreement is fixed and we've gone into that, because I think it's in the city's best interest to fight for a full access there as well. A right in, right out is like the minimal amount that you would need, you know, um. It'd be great if you had a right in, right out and a left out, you know, there's a number of different. Levels of restriction there. Of course, we want just a full blown access to make that commercial work. Norman's nodding to say, cause he knows a little bit about commercial.
And I think that's my point is. The city can do lots of things to make. Commercial development attractive to people. But it still comes down to a market, a market decision, right? Whether it's Ironwood or someone else that wants to do commercial or doesn't wanna do commercial, they're gonna do it when they think they can make money there, right? And and if we and if we don't figure out the intersection, that definitely devalues that piece of property. For a commercial unless you're gonna sell cream circles to the people that live in uh Ridgeline Park and that's it.
If the concern's traffic, I'm all in favor of accelerating that access and whatever.
From twenty nine hundred to that other access.
Especially if we've just solved the problem of needing a fire access at twenty nine and we can leave that farm lane as is. And uh just, we would still need, I I believe, some kind of restriction for residents trying to exit twenty nine on the SR one sixty five. And so I still behooves us to to consider that crash gate with keys to the residents to the north. And fire down below, we don't need that for fire, it doesn't look like. And then shift our focus to let's let's see what we can get on the commercial access. Even if it's a temporary right now and and then with the hope that manning down the road, we can get a more full blown access with the corridor alignment and. You know, there's the potential that Mill Road. Um, will turn into a cul-de-sac once these other roads happen. And nobody knows exactly what'll happen, but there's the potential. And if you have this, if you have it in mind to have this as a full access. When you go to the table to meet with you dot to redo this corridor agreement, that's what's on your mind. Hey, we want a full access here. What do we need to do to make that happen?
Yeah, full disclosure, uh Millville will receive. Cow funding, local option, sales tax money to do design work on a full intersection at thirty two hundred south. Which further raises questions about what the heck happens to thirty one hundred south. Did I say twenty nine? I meant thirty two.
And you own the home, right? At the end of the light, you've already.
That's that's, we we bought that house when you dot said they wouldn't stop northbound traffic. Unless it was a full intersection. It used to be this thing called a high T intersection, which meant people turning left off of thirty two hundred south to go north. Had to merge into fifty mile, if you're lucky, fifty mile an hour traffic with that traffic never stopping. And most of them are headed, a number of them are headed to the Maverick, so they have one block to get it done. And so we were so serious about getting northbound traffic stopped. And you dot telling us that we would not achieve that unless it was a full intersection, we bought two pieces of property there. It doesn't go all the way through. I think it's two, isn't it, Justin? So that that doesn't mean we're on board with Millville's proposal. Because once we got you dot to change the light, so that northbound traffic stops, so. People on thirty two hundred south can get on one sixty five without putting their life at risk. We think I've, my personal feeling is the problem for people on thirty two hundred south, which is Nibbly citizens is solved. Millville wants to do that because they have development going on. On their east bench, they need to get to one sixty five, so they can get to Logan and they don't wanna. On their east bench, they need to get to one sixty five, so they can get to Logan and they don't wanna turn north and then. Go past the Maverick and not have a light at thirty one hundred south.
I have noticed that left, left turn northbound from thirty two, the light is green longer. The stacking isn't as, as a big of an issue, but I know. That was one of the big complaints from the residents, it's like, I already can't get onto the highway. But I noticed it, it has changed, I don't know if UDOT's coming, done a little bit of changing on the clock, and I wonder how that. Would even affect positively from our, our previous traffic studies saying, hey, twenty nine might be needed.
I don't know, we, we've talked to about double laps and other things too, so.
You said they're doing this study on the SR one sixty five, how long would that take? Is it like years?
It's more like a planning study, it's.
Well, it's not just a study, it's a get higher in Providence, Millville and Nively to agree on something, so tell me how long that's gonna take.
We have a corridor agreement in place now, already on one sixty five, but.
How old is that, baby?
It's pretty old.
More than ten years.
Over ten?
Yeah. Probably fifteen.
It's probably needed.
And I think that's the realization. Things are happening on one sixty five, especially north of us, I mean. I'm, I'm excited to see progress moving towards us, but I still think. I still think it's gonna take twenty years to get here. Now, especially since Millville has commercial property available since they have a sewer. Right, I mean, Providence is making hay, but we gotta chew up Providence and then chew up Millville and. Eventually we get to Nively for a commercial opportunity, so one sixty five. One of the things this study is supposed, we talked about doing was. Actually identifying. How much commercial development, how much commercial space actually makes sense on one sixty five? Based on the house tops, based on traffic patterns, that kind of thing. Instead of. Waiting for it to happen, try to understand how much cur- commercial opportunity there is, because. Providence thinks there's unlimited opportunity, Millville, I'm sure now thinks there's unlimited opportunity, and I know we think there's unlimited opportunity, so. Is to try to bring some reality to what is the economic. Uh, opportunity of that road.
Appreciate your time.
You kind of, you kind of scale on that, Justin, you don't agree with that?
No, I'm sorry, I was lost in another thought.
I'll say you agree with him.
Penny for your thoughts.
That was, that was part of the, the scope.
Yeah, that was part of the scope, right, I haven't, we haven't, we haven't awarded a contract or scoped it.
Right, right, but the, at least the part of the application, I should say.
Yes, please, does, does staff feel like you've got enough direction on this?
Is it clear as mud?
I was going to actually reiterate.
Do you wanna go to the bullet points for us?
So I understand that we wanna look at. Abandoning that portion, the improvements on that, collecting in-lu fee and focusing more on that access at the commercial site.
But make it safe. Get the fire trucks where the fire trucks need to go.
And part of that will include me calling the fire marshal, laying out this plan and making sure that, that, that second access. The intent is met by using that alleyway.
Yeah, the, the end goal here is open access, the, the restrictions, the, the whole point of abandoning the twenty one hundred is to not have this weird. Garbage stuff going on that road, like.
It's level, level of service level is better than le- level of service F.
Yeah.
So did I capture that right then?
Yeah, and I would, I would emphasize the, the in-lu fees to be what it would have cost when they were required to build it, which would be daytime, et cetera. Whatever that might look like, but.
It's a detail, but the, the in-lu fee, in my opinion, needs to not have a string attached to it that it will be devoted to improving that road at some point, because we're not gonna be able to afford. It's like, it's, it's an in-lu fee that we have the right and, you know, to do what we want, the city has the right to. I don't know, we can limit it somewhere to the park or something in the project, that's fine, but. It's not tied to, all right, someday we're gonna develop that road, it's tied, you know, if we're giving up on it, we're giving up on it. And we'll never be able to afford it, ten years from now, we collect the fee now, no matter what we do, we can get the money. Build out twenty nine hundred?
I know, it's a good answer, but at least you know it's done. And then put your gate.
Yeah, so you have this road that goes, goes, oh, what, you're still on sixty five?
But, but so on park there is our, is our town center future, correct? So.
At least you know that, hey, we, we plan on owning this road.
I think our town center will be a physical quantity, it's like clump over here and a clump over here, town center is in, no, but we really don't have a center.
Fantastic town center, watch out.
All right.
I, I think.
You got it, Tom?
I believe so, I think I have, thank you.
I think it may, I, it may.
I'll come back.
Whoa, oh yeah.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Levi.
I'll wait for you.
I'm pretty certain the reason we're not discussing, uh, aligning, putting in at the south is because of the cost. But to me, it's a magic number in that I don't know what it is. I would be curious to know. Of course, based upon our last round estimates on south, we're so far off. I don't know, but I would be curious to, to know if that were ever to be aligned, what would be the cost? Ultimately to the city versus.
No, it's, it's a great one, and if, if I may, a lot. Say why, because. There's a house that's gonna have to go.
Right.
So we may purchase it and be a full take relocation cost, so we're talking a half a million at least right there. Just to get us the right, the property. That, that's the beginning point, and then, uh, you know, we're, I don't know, you know, just a rough guess, and it's probably gonna triple that.
Is that the only encumbrance on the alignment is we line it up, or there also additional cost for?
Yeah.
Why we line it up, does that solve the problem?
That actually was one of the mitigating recommendations in the traffic study by Hales, that, that actually mitigated that by lining it up. And we get full access to it with no ride in, ride outs, just stop signs on both sides, I'm not saying that, but UDOT would agree to that.
Yeah, but they say line it up, but they might say line it up in specific.
Yeah, they might put a median, they might do that turn median. That I showed.
I mean, I, I appreciate. What Kay's saying, it would be interested to, like, if we did it, would they let us? Would be a good question.
Okay, and, and I can have that conversation, it sounds like we're gonna be working with them on this full access on, uh, the white market side, so I'll, I'll have that conversation. Great comment, thanks.
I don't know when I'll be able to report back on any progress, but I'll, I'll keep you posted as we progress, so thank you. I guess, uh, visionary can't move forward till we figure this out and change the development agreement, so I'll be pushing. Right, Ben?
Yes, absolutely, I fully appreciate your time tonight, any other questions, I'm, I'm a little happy to do that. And we will, I guess we will plan to, to visit with you, I think you're three weeks, is your next schedule, you think?
Yep.
We'll have a proposal with that P and, and a plan on how to go forward, I mean, we don't approve a delay at phase seven.
Yeah, we may have to take it to planning commission if, if, if it's a development agreement, um. If, if we have to end up doing an amendment, we'll see the details of that, but we may have to do that.
Which would mean it to the. Yeah, the next planning commission meeting is over from today.
Yeah, so that.
All, all I would need to do on our side is to do a solid takeoff on what we would end up paying for that, to figure out that in-lu fee. I don't know what South would need to do for her, but in my mind, that's all that needs to be done. To continue moving.
Yeah, so that might have some more work to do to make the recommendations.
We just have to make sure that the. Development, that, that, that the development agreement, I feel like. Should be made whole, one way or the other.
Yeah.
And if it's not, then we should talk about an amendment.
That's right.
And I don't. Say that amendment needs to go in front of P and Z.
It, it may, yeah, it may, it may have to, depending on the details of everything, so. We'll.
But if they choose not to, and they just build the road out and then they just keep moving, is that right?
Right.
So if you just build the road out and put your gaze in here, that's all, and you can keep going.
I'm not sure if, we may have, we may have to relook at the agreement, it says for public access.
We should, we should, what amendment is just continuing forward on, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ben and company, thank you. Are we done? No.
Keep it going.
Let's talk about something really easy like renting money. Eli, can you, uh, lead up in the discussion or kick off the discussion on transfer of development rights?
Yeah.
How the city can scale, uh.
Yeah, and I'll try to be as straightforward as possible on this, I just have one slide. So the TDR ordinance, uh, was adopted last March, um, we haven't seen any transfers or. Um, you know, any, any use of, of it, but, but you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a solid ordinance with, with, um, a lot of detail. What we're gonna talk about tonight is one, uh, detail that was, that wasn't necessarily worked out in the ordinance. And that is, um. So, well, first I'll back up a little bit, so, so just to jog your memory, the TDR ordinance allows for the transfer of development rights. From the sending areas, which are shown, and I, I, I've just zoomed into a, a specific area on there, but the green areas to the, to the red areas, so the green areas, you. You sever or you take away the development rights, and in turn you allow additional density on, on the, um, red areas. What, what we haven't discussed is. Some, well, first of all, some of these sending areas are city owned property, so the. The three, um, that I'm pointing to here, the regional park area, the recycle site of twelve hundred west. And then Morgan Farm, they're all, they're all, uh. Sending areas, uh. We're starting, we're starting to get some, um, interest on the TDR program. You know, from, from a, from a developer and. What we found is. The, the lowest hanging fruit for them is to approach the city to purchase our development rights rather than go to, go to the private market. Right? Um, what we haven't discussed is what, how we approach them buying our development rights from one of these properties. Um, we don't have, we don't have a process codified on how to do that, it really is just a negotiation, private, private negotiation. And, and that would, we assume, you know, come back to the city council. For final approval, what we're talking about tonight is more from a high level, how we want to approach. That negotiation, because what, what, how we see this panning out is that we would first. Kind of draft something with, with the, um. With the developer and then bring it back to city council, and we just wanted some guidance on how to approach that, that negotiation. So a couple of approaches. On how to do this, and, and, and by the way, I did do some research, um, Farmington City, they. They have, um, some experience, they actually weren't one of our case studies on, on the TDR. But, um, they, they do have a TDR program and. And they, they've dealt with this issue, um. They, you know, with city owned land that's, that's in the sending areas. And they, and there's really, you know, in talking with them and with our attorney. The two probably most viable approaches to this, the first would be just to base. Um, the price on appraisal of, of the conservation easement. So, um, there is, there is a value to, to that, you know, purchasing that conservation easement. Um, Berriver Land Conservancy, that's what they do when they, when they, when they, um. Purchase conservation easement for properties. And, 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 and that could come up with a number, and then we could base it on that. On that number of, of how much does the conservation easement cost for this ten, ten acre piece of property? We'll divide that up by how many credits, okay, that's, that's the price. Um, the issue with that is. Uh, and this is what kind of Farmington ran into in, in their experience, is it, it's. It didn't, um, every development's a little different. And, and, um. It may not pencil for certain, for, for a lot of developments, because the price may be too high, or it may be a windfall for other developments, because. It's so low, you're just giving it away. And so the, what, what Farmington did, and, and, you know, it, it definitely takes some expertise, is to base the price on the profit. The developer would have received with the additional density, they also looked at what profit the city would have received. If they developed the property, and then that, that. And then they start negotiating from those, from those points and came up with the price, and typically it was about half. That profit, right, so you have to look at a pro forma of the development. To do that, and then, and then you can base the price on the TDR credit. You know, how many, how, how much did, how much additional revenue do they get? You know, let's say they're adding twenty more units to their development. And they get two hundred thousand, we'll use round, round numbers, well, they, they get ten thousand dollars of additional revenue. Maybe we, maybe we take half of that, the city takes half and they take half of that, so we say five thousand dollars for, for a TDR credit, that's just an example. So it's. I.
Just doesn't, I don't know how you do.
I haven't done a lot of research on that, I do think it has to do with what. What you could have done had you developed it, so it comes back to that, um. It's kind of an opportunity cost, right? Like, I don't have a lot, I don't have a lot of, uh. Experience with that, so I'd, I'd have to do more research, but. But there is an appraisal, I mean, like there, you know, there, there's all.
Stan, what you could have done had, had you not conservative.
Yeah.
I thought we were trying to say, well. How much is open space worth?
Right, no.
We all like it, but how much is it worth to us?
Right, I mean, really, it's a compensation. To the property owner to say, you're not developing it, you can't develop it. So instead of that, we're gonna pay you. Um, for what you would have received, that's what I understand it would be based on, but. So anyway. Just asking for some feedback, if, if this, if either one of these is the appropriate approach, if it's something different, this is just in. In our talks and research that we've kind of come up with, but. Um. And again, none of this is like binding at this point, it would all be a private negotiation, but just something to start with. So we have some, some direction in those negotiations, this is all, you know, grand new territory for us, so.
I'm just seeing what you're doing, to see what works with those other cities, and just base it on that. They've already.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess that, that's the thing is. I feel like the second way that I explained it, we're more likely to be able to make it work. Um, the first way, you can say, oh, that's more fair, because it's the same for everyone, um, but. Yeah. If, if we're more motivated to, let's, let's, let's make this work with whatever development comes through. We can do it that way.
I guess the bottom line is that. That the city council has the right to accept. The value placed on the credits that are transferred or reject them. You know, we don't have to make it exactly formulaic, because we can just say, no, that's not enough.
Yeah, you can reject it.
Right.
Yep. We can tell you what it's based on, they can make their argument, we can recommend it to staff, and you can say, no, that's not good enough. So.
It should be based on reality. But we still aren't tied to. Accepting reality.
Yeah, I think the second way that you explained makes a lot of sense, and I think even within our, our, uh. Council and P and Z, we have a lot of people who deal with home sales or like Tyler over at Deal, he does a lot of developments at his own, I think we have. Some kind of internal expertise that could help guide, like, that doesn't sound right, or that does sound like it's like the right number to go.
If you're gonna be around the formula, I'm gonna do it based on what the land would have been under a general land. So. That each place is, you know, some of them are under R two A, some are under R two. Based on that is the starting point.
No, we're talking about selling development rights off of parkland.
I know, but what it would be when it's not parkland.
Oh.
Yeah, I think we'd have to make an assumption on the zoning, right, R two or adjacent zoning.
And is.
Yeah.
That's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, the only problem is the master plan shows that as park.
We already.
But we could, but we could re, I mean, the city council could rezone it. What, I mean. So, okay. Yeah, and I thi- I think, I think that second method makes sense. And at the same time, looking at that opportunity cost of what we would make, because I, I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to sell. The development rights for, you know, way less than what we could have made for it if we could be using that. For something else in the city, you know, so we probably have to look at both of those. Um.
Give you a starting point.
Yeah. Okay.
It's fair.
Okay. Well, thank you. I mean, I, I know this is brief, but I, I think, I think that. Gives me what, I mean, I feel comfortable with moving forward with it, you know, discussion if. You know, as, as we get approached by these developers and we can come back with. Specific proposals, but. Yeah.
Perfect. For you.
Yep, yep, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Let's move right into council and staff reports. Kay, will you start us, please?
Um. Thank you all. But we now, um, Sarah Lynch, about participating in. At school. Government. Yeah, anyway, it's something I've participated in, uh, for most of the past years. So you have an opportunity to do it. Do I do it? I'm sending that. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that out there if anyone else wanted to go. She's careful to make certain that we know what's going on so we don't find ourselves in trouble with the, with the meeting back.
I think I've got the last two. Do you want to argue with that?
The second. On the way.
Okay. Darren. All right, I, I have a resident call me. I had a couple of calls. I know one of them called Justin too. About, uh, the number of residents who are snow blowing all the snow into the street back the. Snowplows, I know Stuki calls you about that. And I went and drove back through the street and it does create quite a mess and. Until it rains and the snowplows do the drum twice. Make sure taxpayers understand this is taxpayer money. And why do you want to pay someone to do the job twice?
Well, it's a safety issue.
And it is. I mean, that day, I came and drove down that street. After he called me and he was, he was following up pretty good because. Most every homeowner, I guess, is snowing everything to the street. So I don't know how the best way to address that or how to remind people there.
What are you going to do about it, Steve?
We, we talked about it.
What are you going to do about it?
Yes, I went around with Steve and he, he showed me kind of the extent of the problem. We, we talked back and forth about it. You know, we, the city has, has done some outreach to try to get the word out that, hey, this isn't something you shouldn't be doing. But, you know, I think social media and some different avenues to try to get the word out there. Um, but, you know, we expect to continue to see it, uh. So, you know, that's where code enforcement could come in. We, what, I, I, what we talked about doing, you know. During, maybe during the next bigger storm is to, and I, I still need to create it. But to just come up with a little warning that we, we give the residents. The first one i- is a warning and then, and then we track it. The next storm, if we get it again, then, then we can cite them. You know, so we, we'll, we probably won't, we, we'd probably do the warrant, like, we don't have to warn them first. We could just go out and issue citations, but, um, we, we feel like then, then we're doing kind of targeted. Outreach where we're, you know, going, going to specific property owners and hopefully that's enough for them to. Turn the snow the other direction and we, and then the next time, you know, it's, it's a lot better than the time before. It's, it's kind of what we're hoping.
Do you want to jog the fire still? Yeah.
One of the residents, you know, he, he, he said he, he volunteered to hang door hangers for you.
Yeah, maybe we do a door. I mean, we've done door hangers for the dogs and we could do, maybe a door hanger is better than a.
Yeah.
We can try, we're, we're in, I think that's what we're going to try and see if it's effective.
He hit one of the stop, I think the wall stopped. Especially if the first guy got away.
It's literally that's what it's like.
Maybe if they're pushing snow out in the road, we could like pile it up right in front of their driveway.
Oh, we can have a lot of fun.
We, we have the nuclear button.
But if they're blowing them, they just put on their grass. This is, I don't.
Pushing it with, uh, their four wheelers out.
It's both, yeah.
Funny ears. Same thing.
Same physics.
So can I speak to that briefly? You might have noticed Steve, um, in our cul-de-sac, which you've had lots of time there. We had one resident that was putting their snow on the road, but only one, which was kind of unusual. Over the years, I lived there in the cul-de-sac as we've explained to the neighbors why the city does. With the way it operates, what's happening there. A lot of really kind, gentle education has changed it. When I first lived in that cul-de-sac, everyone was pushing. Their snow out. And that is, that has shifted over the years. And I think it's because it's been kind. Educational information. It hasn't been, we're going to cite you, and it hasn't been, you're in big trouble. It's, do you understand what's happening here? Just in nice ways. And you've got your kind people that you've had those conversations with and they don't care. That's, that's a really good idea to cite them, but that's what I've noticed on my street.
It's going to melt and go away, but we screwed up once again. Go out here and fix that now. Our hope is to go around and try and educate people. It's all stopping, I guess. Talking with them, trying to get them to act. Wind down, we'll have somebody. And I explained to, to Stuki that that's what we tried to do first, certification. Anything else, Darren? No.
Uh, I just wanted to say thank, I don't know if it was you or who it was, but there was a very nice pothole on Eighth West. And one day it was there and the next day it was fixed. So thanks. That was so great. Yeah, it was very nice to see that happen so quickly. Um, and I just had somebody reach out to me. I brought this up before, but the sidewalk on Point Six under South. It's near front of your parents' house, Nathan. Uh, that has the sidewalk and then kind of a gravel and then the road. Uh. She, I just had a resident send me some pictures, like when that snow starts melting. It doesn't go down the gravel, but it just comes up onto the sidewalk and just really wet and muddy for kids walking home. So I don't know if there's anything we can do about that sidewalk. I know I brought that up before.
Just west of.
Yeah, so just west of the L M elementary, um, on the north side of the road. Where the kids walk over to the four way stop, you know, or to the, to.
On the sidewalk.
Yeah, I can show you a picture for me, but just like what, maybe not today, but when she sent us a couple of days ago, the snow starts melting. It just like, it makes it puddle, melt cool onto the sidewalk. So it's just really wet for the kids. Uh, unless they're going to be walking onto your parents' lawn to get around it, so.
The L I D is not working.
Sorry, what?
The L I D. Swell.
Yeah, no, it's not. At least when it melts fast, the snow's not melting down into the gravel, into the dirt there, so. Yeah, yeah, I mean. Yeah, the sidewalk is well spot.
Yeah, it's just flat.
Yeah, since that's a pretty.
Oh, it, it goes to the sidewalk.
Nathan? Um, I just, uh, want to say thanks. You know, we got lights. I have to ask about those this time. It feels good. Um, still will ask about partial runway and just the progress on, on that, um. Budget this year, but, uh, just thanks for everybody doing everything. It's great. Sure, your departments know we appreciate it. In on that, we live in the cul-de-sac. When we plow the snow, they put it all up in the mailbox, which I told my wife I'd go move. She called the, the city and they moved it. So thanks for my wife and I guess thanks for me that I can't do it. They did awesome.
Well, is this Councilman Larson's house?
Well, he did call me. I said, no, I got it. Don't worry about it.
Oh, I appreciate calls like that. I appreciate knowing it. Help us go better. I know we got new guys and new stuff, so. He said, where to put it in these cul-de-sacs. It benefits us to hear about us, so.
Now, we appreciate it. They did awesome. And then, do we have any fire hydrants that are still in op? I see one or two back. Well, if they're just discontinued or are still waiting for parts to fire.
Everything is. Two weeks ago, Obama got our park, it's not working, we're here and a half. Uh, learners of COVID. Not managed to have one fire hydrant in the city because they make one part of the fire hydrant. So every hydrant in Nibbly City is functional as a, a one on a highway yard. We was doing a, a west company. Every fire hydrant in Nibbly City.
I mean, I, I found this league, when, when this league.
April, maybe.
Seventeenth through the nineteenth.
That's when it's in New York.
You're going to ask about that, Cheryl, anyway.
You know, there's a few things to talk about, but I'm not letting this to talk about.
Before we leave that, I mean, if you guys could let Cheryl know as quickly as you reasonably can, it would be appreciated. We do have a block of rooms reserved. Uh, but we do need to, um, cancel those when we can, so. Post knows, when you can, please.
When's the early registration? Yeah, do we have a deadline? I'm not good at doing. Okay, as soon as we can. Please. All right, so, um, I'll let just to talk about most stuff. That I could talk about, but there is one thing, we, there was going to be an additional agenda I talked about Citizen of the Year. Um, I think we've got that on there because after Heritage Days last year. Um. Chad and I did kind of a post-mortem on stuff and, and I had things to say about Citizen of the Year, so we put it on the calendar, so. It popped up and it's like, what? We have talked about that already. And it is a good time to talk about it, so. I would take any direction that the council. Has about what we're doing right or wrong with Citizen of the Year. I think we have some opportunities to make improvements. Number one. Um, the time and place, I'm not sure is actually the, the right time and place to do that during the. Community dinner and there's lots of activities, there's a lot going on, people getting very, sort of. Uh, playing before eating one. So I'm not sure that we're adequately recognized Citizen of the Year. So I could use help on suggestions of, of, uh, maybe a, a different or better kind of place we could do a citizen. Also need a little more, a little more organized, a little more formal, but then. There might not be that. Um, if you have any ideas on how to choose. The Citizen of the Year, uh, we've done things very formally over the last one year, it's been more informal. I think last year I told you. I've been thinking about it and I thought about it long enough and this is who I'm going to name as Citizen of the Year and that's the way. Year before that, Nancy Jabs, well, that was a recommendation from staff. You might think about whether we actually, uh, do something a little more formal, like. Uh, invite citizens, which of course would include council, but also staff. Or anyone else to put in a recommendation or a nomination, I guess, for. Um, Citizen of the Year and that way they would fit a right, the qualifications of that person. Right? And I'd be happy to follow up with whoever we choose to get some more information to talk about. Uh, when we present the award. But then have some kind of selection committee, right? To say, look, we've got these applications, these are the, these are the wonderful things about these people. And we're choosing this person as Citizen of the Year. I'd rather not do that in council meeting. Because now we're discussing people in open, in open meeting, so. Those are the thoughts I've had. Do you have any feedback for me tonight or would you like to think about it? Hey, please.
So woman of the year recognized at the royalty academy patches. Uh, we could pick you back Citizen of the Year. Or we could have a special event with the youth council and they recognize Citizen of the Year. When they have their, they, they traditionally have a few big meetings throughout the year. We have to check and see when they do those big meetings, but.
The youth council has big meetings?
Well, occasionally they have, they, they have some, a few bigger events they have. But it might be good to check with them and see if that's possible, either they, or perhaps put together a, a meeting that. And one of the years done in May, I don't know what works through the council. They might have.
Better get busy on nominations then.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, they might be, there's a organization in place.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll start to shout about that. I think the. The Miss Nibbly contestants actually to choose woman of the year, okay?
Nathan? I like getting more nominations from the citizens. I think sometimes they know more than we do. That'd be nice.
Always.
Uh, just have that open up. I mean, I like the idea of the committee to kind of make much of that call.
It's going to be one idea for recognizing. You see, another city, you know, we do it for our royalty. It's kind of a lot of.
Well, they hit, uh, be the grand marshal for the parade. So we line up a nice car for them to ride and I don't think we, I think you drive. Yeah, you drive the Citizen of the Year. They do get like.
See, we got some great guys. We've got some of the stipendees, which is just right after the parade. It tends to be some good turnout to that, but it's not quite as noisy as your, uh, mayor's dinner.
Community dinner.
Sorry, community dinner, yeah.
Do it after the beard contest. Or mustache? I can't remember. It's beard, okay.
Yeah, those are great thoughts. Um, I, I really liked the muted phase, um, despite the passion, I mean, so those are great thoughts. Um, we just needed, needed a nice quiet event for Heritage Days. Maybe the quilt. Do we have the quilt thing? We can do it with surrounded by quilts. Okay. Um, thanks. That's all I think I'm going to talk. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, for the indoor rec RFP. If I volunteer to be on that steering committee or picking committee?
Yeah, let's talk about that, um. Is it okay if, Chad's not here, is it okay if we choose the council membership?
He sent me a text and asked.
If you all would?
Well, he did say, he just, no, he said he needs two committee members.
And he said that to all of you?
No, no, it's okay.
Well, I see, well, this is different, I can see.
I mean, I don't mind two weeks ago.
Alright, so um, two people have asked to be, two council members have asked to be on the selection committee. I'll call you out, Aaron and Ethan. Is the council okay with having Aaron and Ethan be on the selection committee? I'll tell that as a yes. Um, that's about mid-February, I think we'll get rolling on that. Right, and then, of course, there'll be, there'll be other people on that, of course, right? Probably, probably staff. And that's on the selection committee to choose the uh feasibility study.
Yeah.
Then there'll be a steering committee for that. Thank you, Aaron. Anything else you wanted to ask me?
Uh, I'm, I'm done with that, I'm tired, Levi, what do you have?
Uh, just real, real quick, um, for the active transportation plan, we're also gonna have a steering committee. Um, Aaron Mann's already. Um, already volunteered for that, has been on this, the selection committee. But if if there's one other council member that would like to be on that committee, let me know. If you want to, now or later. For the active transportation plan. Oh, oh, yeah, so that's a con, that's, that's, that's a connectivity. Study, this is. Sorry, we've got a lot of committees, don't we, a lot of projects. We don't need, like, if if it's, if if it's only Aaron, that's fine, but if someone else wants to, okay. Great, great.
I mean, I'm, I don't count, but I would definitely welcome.
Yeah, I was, I I think I was, I thought I'd talk to you about that, about having you on there, but, yeah. For sure, okay, so Normal, we'll add you to the list as we get started here.
Anything else, Levi?
Nope, I think I'm good.
Cheryl? Steve?
Uh, we've kind of touched on everything, snow removal, uh, hydrants. Um, so guys can kind of put me on some homework here, a month ago, to look for some grants for some equipment, and. I actually, we have a two thousand five thirty ten meter. I was able to find a grant within the state of Utah, so I uh, I applied for it, and I got word this, this week. That we have been approved for. Uh, this grant, it paid twenty-five percent of a new vehicle. So, new truck being about three hundred and fifty grand, ballpark, that's what Sanders filed. So they give us eighty-seven thousand five hundred for that truck. We paid fifteen thousand for the truck. Four years ago.
Fifteen thousand?
Yeah, if you remember, four or five years ago, we picked up a couple trucks from the county. For fifteen.
Ten or twelve.
Well, we might still be able, so we're, yeah, basically, we're, we should ground out about coming up seventy-five to eighty grand ahead on the truck.
Oh, a long drive, and you have the truck frame, um, and put it through this whole wall.
It's been, it's air quality, it's trying to get old fleet trucks off the road.
Yeah, I thought the uh clean fleet.
So the grant is for us to sell this truck or buy a truck?
Right, so we buy a new truck, they give us twenty-five percent. Of the value of our new truck to destroy this old truck.
I see, right?
Take it off.
The whole of your team, do you guys rock paper scissors?
It's not very much fun.
Um, yeah, it sounds. It's like a good time.
Into um, the twenty twenty?
Yeah, I don't know, maybe Norman can give us some insights on how to get through that.
Cup frying loss. That's why I'm holding on to all my others, because I figured the state's gonna pay me to get rid of town.
So you'll probably see that in the budget next year, just so you know, you know, we'll show the eight thousand in revenue or whatever, but. Um, and likely at, you know, three hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollar truck.
Sorry, you got like a dump truck or a?
This will be a ten-wheeler with a snow plow and sander, so it's gonna be. Be another addition to our snow removal, so. It'll be awesome, so looking forward to it, exciting, but.
So would that hold dirt if we did our own part?
Yeah, it's glad we have to destroy the other one, huh?
We uh, just I know, you're probably already thinking about the budget. Um, one of the things we keep track of the budget in now to show our citizens when we start raising their taxes, is how much grant money we get, so. That's one we gotta, and any of those we gotta include.
Yeah, for sure.
Our grant summary.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
That was pretty cool, never done once, always getting bummed that. I mean, goodness, we bought it from the county, they they put all the miles on for us. Got a half, seven thousand five hundred uh miles average per year. Truck has a hundred and seventy-one thousand miles on, so that worked out real good.
Yeah, it is Steve to give other?
Yeah, um, maybe just one other thing, I don't know. Would be helpful for us to sit down with council, I don't know if you guys are hearing a lot of complaints, but people are upset, not a lot, but. The way we're pushing stone. You know, they're saying. Our priority is to get lanes open. My priority is not to get it all the way to curbs, to get my traveling lanes open, right, especially when it continues to snow on us, and there's gonna. My trucks are just gonna focus on keeping the travel lanes open. I don't know if people ask, or maybe just explain that to them, when the storm's done, then we're gonna take care of it, push it all the way back. So, we've had a few complaints, um. I don't know, I don't think it's any different this year, but.
The the storm we had, we were just late, and it was quick, so you didn't have time, nobody had time.
Yeah.
Either house piled on this.
And we have truck, we got more, we've, we've gathered our trucks out, so we're, we're getting the subdivisions quicker. But if I focus on cleaning this subdivision while it's still snowing, and this subdivision now has five inches of snowing on those back lines, so. We're focused on keeping the, trying to keep the asphalt. So.
So it's similar to getting those tracks in your own driveway, they'll plow, right? Drive over that enough, it's gonna be there all the way there.
Especially on a northern driveway. North shadow driveway. You know, if it's, if it's five o'clock in the night, and it's been out all day, we're probably all, now we got car all over the road. So it's back, warm, warm, in the wake of this pride and war. Cause that gives us a good all-in pusher, and that one already off, so.
So what, how can we help? Would you like us to tell you?
People are upset, come to you, and just explain how our process works.
So should we line up some time so you can educate us, or did that just?
Yeah, we could do that, I have a bell, but you guys want to go for a ride along, we'll probably throw in a truck.
I want on one.
Tell all the notices that you can hand out. So we can cover a lot of city.
I'd love to do a little ride along.
Okay.
It's easier to explain to people, one of them say a stat truck.
Yeah, we can, alright. Will you both focus on daytime, will it just stop, so I might just be ready to available.
I don't know who's doing uh Myro, but the level of service is way above par.
Yeah, we, we.
So it's probably not fair.
Focus on that.
It's not right, I should get the lowest level of service in town, that would make me more, I hear them backing up and stuff. I'm laying there in bed, nice warm bed, you guys are out there, I hear the beep beep beep, and it's like. What? They don't back up, they don't have time to back up, and I go out there and there's nothing in my driveway, and it's like, oh my gosh, it's all my neighbors, and I'm so happy.
Real close, my first one's done, because all around is priority. Running mile all the way back out.
Only because it's makes then from a thing.
He hears the beep and is happy, I hear the beep at four in the morning, whoops, wakes me up and I'm ticked. Turn that beeper off, god.
You guys do a great job, Steve, the the pot hole on Eighth West was a good one, we were tackling, because I, I, I got the complaint about a bent rim and a pop tire.
Yeah, it was big, yeah.
And and uh. Steve fixed it the day before uh the resident sent the complaint. So they are really fast. Man, I can't believe how you guys, how quick you guys got on that, we got, we got good people. Did you end up fixing the one that's in the county then? So we fixed. I know, but it's, you said it was east of.
It was.
East of Firefly.
South of Firefly. Excuse me, north of Firefly, north of Firefly.
South side of the road.
How do we go north of Firefly on twenty-two hundred south?
Yeah, so you just. It's almost south.
It's county road.
That's county road.
Since when?
Since we, since always.
Yeah, that's all, that's us all the way down.
From the intersection?
Not, there's a, there's a short window.
Just Firefly Park.
But where Firefly Park is, is ours, and where Strata is, is Logan's.
Right.
So the center line of twenty-two hundred. Is Logan, Nibley, and then when you get to the Eighth West, there's a short section of county. On the south and north is Logan.
But it's not an island, there's not a county.
Right, right, absolutely.
It's not, it's not. It's not an island, it's just an area between two cities.
Alright, I love it. I mean, we're dealing with real municipal issues that you hear about in New York City and Boston, when we're filling potholes. So, good job. Tom?
I did have another street light. The the thirty-two hundred south roundabout will be on the uh northwest leg, or right there at the. You know there, I got an update this morning, the the ship date for that is March eighth. Forget that ship, you can schedule an installation. I've tried to get an update for the thirteen hundred west half road. But I I didn't get an answer for Mark, consulting me to do the wet, underliniation, so. He promised me the final report last month, but uh, I keep on that. We are in negotiation with um, who's that? Sierra Homes? Yeah, Sierra Homes, the Firefly States, there's still a half road there by the park there. We got a good cost estimate to enter into an agreement to share the cost, to then build our portion of it. It's a streaming deal, so you're jumping on it, I'm just waiting for the agreement to get it to be adjourned, so. That one will uh just, when they do their development, that'll go in place during that construction, and we'll reimburse them that cost. Are there any other ones I'm missing?
Is that connection, is that our near to the way, or is that?
Connection to Temple West? So we are. Let's see, we're partially awarded from COG. And our intent is to go for the rest of it this year and bid it, you know, this fall.
For the rest of phase five, but there's still a section of road that Sierra Homes needs to build.
Yeah, so in conjunction with, just just with their development, so make that final connection there, so. Now, we wanted to first, the cost of developers, so we're not burdened at that cost.
Yeah, and they've been, and they've been approved for phase two, but they just haven't moved on it yet.
There's a, so, development wise, there there's trending, it was trending really downward last year, after summer. There wasn't a whole lot going on, there's a lot of people talking, some really mild movement in plans and stuff, but. This January, it it's really accelerated, people are just pushing, 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 so I'm expecting a pretty big year. So I'm hoping uh, Sierra Homes is actually pushing us to do Heritage Parkway, which is point six hundred south. About thirteen hundred west, and uh, they're kind of sitting on Firefly States, but I anticipate that would be going.
Seems like the big deal with uh legislature last year was about. Cities dragging their feet and not entitling lots, turns out that was never the problem. Uh, but they've taken the pressure off of that this year, and it seems like where. I mean, you saw what kind of legislation came through about the the SCV development, this year it's more about finance, making money available to developers.
Why are you laughing?
It's all the housing crisis. Thanks, Tom, anything else?
So Myro will be a clean better than it's ever been in years.
That's why all these other people can't answer. Uh, Justin, sorry to make you go last.
Oh, you're, you're fine, um, just a few things, wanna make sure everybody saw email from Amy about, we got the GFOA award. Uh, so that's pretty awesome, um, hopefully we can congratulate her on that, she put a lot of work into that. You know, I I, I think I focus on like. The numbers, right, there's a lot more than the numbers in that budget, and a lot of that comes from Amy, so. Uh, great job to her, uh, and you all on that, uh. Cheryl looked at, March twenty-first is the deadline for early registration for the mid-year conference. Um, we also had a URS, uh, Utah Retirement Systems, uh, audit. That they kind of go through our records and see, make sure we're doing everything correctly there on how we're paying our employees and how we're paying their retirement. And all the benefits and things go along with that, and so just found a couple minor little things for us to tweak there. And uh, we'll get those taken care of and everything uh pretty good there. They're what? They're already done, they're done. Uh, and on the audit note, uh, we will be bringing you the uh last year's fiscal year audit, will be presented at our next meeting. We've got them scheduled to to come, so that'll be exciting, um. All in a quick report, that I've had some communications with the county sheriff about trying to do a better job forcing dogs in Firefly Park. He assured me that they're on it, and so we'll see, see how that goes. Um.
Let me just deputize Aaron.
I, I, I was already getting after my neighbors this week, it's fine.
Yeah, well, if you know of like times of when they could like target and stuff like that, please, you know, please talk to me and let me know, because. They can't just sit there all day, but, but they are uh going to, according.
I know a resident who lives over there, could probably watch for us.
Right.
Right, but she likes dogs. She let, it makes her feel safe.
Uh, speaking of dogs, we have a dog clinic this Saturday, uh, we'll come in, and we'll have a vet, give your dog its shots and get registered. Kind of a little thing, try to make things easier for the citizens, that's been successful in the past, we'll see how it goes. Um. Got an unfortunate phone call today, uh, from Mr. Rob Patterson. He's decided to leave the private practice, he's going to work for Highland. So we'll be fishing for a new attorney here pretty quickly, um, um, probably put out an RFP for that. Uh, and maybe just in case, uh, depending on how fast we can get after it, we may just enter with uh, like a temporary deal with one of his partners. Just to get us by till we get someone selected with. I was pretty bummed to hear that, really appreciate Rob, all he's done for us.
He's gonna work for the city of Highland?
Yeah, he's just gonna go in-house for Highland.
Okay, so he'll be in. Public.
Yeah, yeah. So kind of a bummer, but. Um, we had uh Canal Company had the shareholder annual shareholder meeting. Feel like this is a pretty big uh, big step uh for Nibley City, we voted our shares. Um, so it's the first time in my tenure here that they. They sort of followed their bylaws and voted based on number of shares. And so we, uh, voted our four hundred and fifty-eight shares. And, uh, there were some changes on the board yet to be seen, you know, if that'll be good or bad for us, we're gonna have high hopes. Um, they did, um, typically, there'd been five members of the board, they voted to, the shareholders voted to put another. Board member, so now there's six board members, because there was a caveat about where. The other board members needed to be. Uh, and so. Anyway, it's, it, it's, it's exciting, we've yet to be seen. It's gonna help us or do us any good, so.
It can't hurt.
It can't get much worse, so. We're pretty excited, hopefully, hopefully it works out, and, uh, next year will probably be even better for us, so. Uh, but that was pretty intense for a minute, um.
Justin put a lot of work into that, and I appreciate that, USU is an ally, um. I mean, we voted our shares on an election that was seven hundred and something to six hundred and something. We had five hundred shares. So we, it was, it was a flex of our authority. Without trying to completely destroy the relation, get their attention, without trying to completely destroy the relationship. Is that fair?
Yeah, we'll see.
And there were a lot of other. Shareholders that were rooting us on, and trying to figure out what they could do. Small shareholders.
That was the big news. Um. Back to the budget, we do have, I, we have started talking about the budget, I have a bunch of meetings set up, uh, pretty heavily through March, April. Uh, and May, so if there's a particular interest that you would like to maybe sit down and talk about, or. Um, you're, you're just welcome, get ahold of me anytime, we can set up a, uh. A time to, to hit those, uh, you know, um, council member Mansell, maybe just maybe an overview of the budget where it's his first time, uh, if anybody would like to join us for that, obviously, we'd be, you know, happy to do that. Uh, anything we can do to make it easier for you guys, I know there's a lot of numbers in there, and a lot of, a lot of things to keep track of, so happy to do everything we can to make that as easy as possible, so. If you're interested in that, let me know, um, our budget, uh, uh, public hearing is scheduled for. Uh, June twentieth at seven thirty. Um, so that, that kind of. Puts us, I mean, that's kind of near the end of the deadline, so, um, we'll probably be pretty set by the time we get to that public hearing, but, uh, you'll have. Basically, that meeting to make any adjustments that you may. Feel are necessary based off the public comment, and that's kind of, um. Dictated by the state law about not doing one at the same time as other municipalities. And so it gets a little squirrely, in fact, we can't start that meeting till seven thirty. Or we can, we can't start that item, I guess, till seven thirty, um. And then the truth of taxation, because of our three-week schedule, that will be August twenty-second, that's pretty late. But, uh, maybe, uh, if, I don't know, if we get closer, we might be able to bump that one, but it's the same thing, it has to be scheduled. On not on top of everybody else's, and have to be publicized a certain way, so. Um, yeah, more and more to come on that, but just be aware, budget season's coming on as quick. Uh, and currently, uh, is actually the legislative session going on, lots of bills being talked about, um, uh, uh, Mayor already mentioned the, you know, financing for developers. There's, uh, quite a few water bills that not, not changing too much, but one pretty substantial one, it's actually being run by, uh, Casey Snyder, it's a pretty big deal, he's trying to figure out a way to. Basically, get more money into the water infrastructure, and that's causing a lot of. Concern about how and who's gonna pay, and how it's fair, or some things like that, so that, that's a pretty big one, um. There's some, um, there's a push out there. To amend truth and taxation, and, and actually make it so that you have to have a public vote to, to have. Like, have an election to raise taxes more than the certified tax rate, which is. Uh, but I don't know if it'll pass, but it's pretty hot. Being talked about right now. Um, there's, there's one that caused me a little bit of concern about, um, you know, I need to do a better job of understanding the difference between fees and taxes. But, uh, some of the cities down south, it started trying to implement a road ta, uh, road fee, basically, for road maintenance. And just charging like a stormwater fee, it's a road fee, maintenance fee, and they kind of got into a middle mix of a lawsuit, and they ended up. That that was okay, that they ended up being okay with what they were doing, but it caused a bunch of other questions about other fees, and one of the bills being pushed right now is to eliminate. The ability to charge a fee for emergency services. Because I guess they wanted to pay for that out of your property tax, instead of charging a, uh, fee for it, uh, there's a couple of things. You know, for us, that, uh, you know, we charge, we pay nine-one-one, and we pay Hiram, uh. I guess, long story short, I think we're gonna be, no matter how that shakes out. Unless it's some drastic, we'll be okay, because there's kind of a carve-out for third and fourth-class cities, you can con, you can contract with somebody else and still charge a fee, so. Watching that one to make sure that one doesn't change or mess anything up. But I don't know, just kind of a lot going on, if you have questions, or something you hear about, you'd like to know more about, and let me know, and I'll, I'll dig into it and find out. And, um. Do everything I can to educate you or help you, so. But LPC is every Monday, uh, everybody, anybody's welcome to log on and watch that, uh, it's just, uh, um. League of Cities and Towns gets together every week to talk about what's going on. In fact, Casey was, uh, at the last one, you know. Pitched his bill in front of everybody. Um, so, interestingly enough, at that same LPC, they, talking about the housing thing. Um, you're, you gotta hopefully, if you guys remember, the PTIF fund is a giant fund where municipalities put their money into, and they, they, uh, you know, invest it. Cautiously, and, and whatever, whatever, and that's how a lot of municipalities invest their money, and we have, um, adopted our policies, basically, we'll match the PTIF. But we're doing it through cash by the bank, but anyway, the, the, they're, they're talking about, the state of Utah had a gentleman from the governor's office there, was talking about maybe. Trying to take some of the interest that's earned off that money and putting it towards. Developers, trying to make their lives easier to build more affordable housing, but there was surprisingly a lot of good strings about it had to be deed restricted. So that it had to meet X income and, and some of these guys, so that was, that was pretty interesting, it's, uh, something I'd never heard, it's finally all states can actually do something besides tell you guys what to do, so. That was nice. But we'll see if it works or where it ends up.
Yeah, it was actually to loan money to developers out of the PTIF, so they have access to four percent money instead of eight percent money. And then the developers. Pay that back when they. They have to retire that debt when they issue a right of inheritance. They're gonna look there, and I started thinking. Well, that's true, I mean, developers don't actually pay for anything, the people that buy the houses and buy your homes are the ones that pay the things. So. This. Was some creative.
Yeah.
It's a lot better than some of the things that we've talked about with special service districts where. Developers can put in infrastructure, take out bonds, and then the city has to accept that bond. When the, uh, subdivision is turned over to the city. Not contradicting, it's just there's lots of creative. People trying to figure out how to get around industries. And whether it's to make affordable housing, or whether it's to line the pockets of developers, I'm not quite sure. All right. Let's take it down. Anything else in council? Any of?